Let's get yes show on the road, we've got a big show. So Kevin, I think, you know, who wants to introduce or do we just jump? You can just jump. Kevin, come on up and lead us.
Kevin from HDR, I think you all have met him at least once as part of our utility rate study. So he'll be here tonight going over what is hopefully our last presentation to you on the utilities.
Thank you. So like we have a lot of time to get into this, so. Purpose of the rate study is just simply to make sure that the each utility, the water, sewer, stormwater, it's always is properly funded, we need to find ongoing operations, both capital, that's really what we focus on. Want to make sure that as they're looking at the water rate design, we're looking at the redevelopment. You remember the last time I was here, we talked quite a bit about, you know, up to seventy five hundred gallons, it's included in the base, but I can help where was it to eliminate that. So that's really one of the things we're looking at today. The proposed rates for funding that scenario. And then also overall, you know, the cost of service is the whole point of that is to have some rates that are proportionate to the impact for each customer class. That's really the main main point of our utility rates. So today we're just gonna review some of the stuff we looked at last time. We're gonna look at the percentage of the requirement for service and look at preliminary rates. And the review of the SDCs, I don't think you look too much at those last time, so we'll do a little bit of discussion on that one. And then hopefully get some direction for you guys about how to achieve.
I'm not going, oh, sorry, I was here clicking away. Okay, try it again. Sorry.
So if you recall from the last time, we had the same chart of one. This is your basic cost of service analysis, or sometimes we call it a comprehensive rate study. And it has the three interrelated analyses. The first one is the revenue requirement. That's basically a financial plan. All we're doing there is taking the revenue and comparing that to the utilities expenses, including capital. You see if there is a delta, how much difference between the revenue expenditures there is. And that's essentially what we're looking at. There, we looked at it over several years. Like ten years. The cost of service, on the other hand, what we're doing with this one is we take the one year of the revenue requirement, usually it's the next, the next year that we're setting rates for. And then we proportionally distribute the cost of the revenue requirement for that one year to the different customer classes in service. There's a lot of different ways that we do that, kind of talk a little bit about them. The final analysis is the rate design. Rate design, we didn't really do a lot of changes for anything but the water work. And that's kind of probably, you know, a bit of the step in the game about the water rates. But essentially the idea of what the rate design is, we are looking at the revenue requirements and okay, we're gonna collect this and how much we need to collect in total. And then the cost of service, okay, well, okay, that being the case, how much are you gonna collect for each of the customer class? Making sure that some of that equals the revenue requirement costs. So into the details. So hopefully this chart is informative and the data was similar to what we saw last time. The numbers have been updated from the last panel of the year, we've had some updates. When we look at the bar charts, there's the bar and there's the line, the bars represent the different expenses for utility, this is water. So there's the, on the bottom, we have the operation payments, that's your salaries, that's all that, you know, expenses that you pay here. The next one up is the taxes and transfers, so you pay walking and same sales tax, or the franchise tax also. Or is it a pilot, one of the other, that's what's paid to the city. And then there's debt service. Oh, let's skip that, go to the capital funding rates. So the capital funding rates. What that is, is the amount.
Oops, sorry. I have to fix something inside.
What capital funding rates is, is the amount from the current year's revenue that we're gonna use to pay for capital. And it's, it's kind of different than a regular business operates, you know, with a business you have. You know, you're operating profit and all that kind of business. And, you know, since the water, the city's a nonprofit, there is no profit from it. So the difference is really debt service and capital funding to rates, because those aren't usually represented in like a business episode, but like very unsteady. So you look at the red line, you can see that, you know, it's above the gray bar a little bit, but above that is the debt service. So this is basically representative of the fact that we're, we're planning on issuing a bit of debt to fund the capital program. We've all seen the bottom of this one. On both of these, you'll see like, the higher the average SDC revenue, it's usually not wise to project on high numbers. So that's why you can see it going back down. SDCs are notoriously difficult to forecast because, you know, development happens all at once, then it cools off. And so essentially, you know, we've gone back to it, have it projected from that perspective, and that's why it's gone back down for water and sewer.
So Kevin, what is SDC?
System development charge. That is the charge that a new developments, like a living or a new home that's being built in the area, they have to pay a system development charge.
For the development of, did us, you want the housing, they pay a.
Yeah, we'll get into a little bit more detail on that.
Okay.
So again, if you had a look at the red line, that's kind of our benchmark here when we talked about how much we're looking at. Raise the rates, the, you know, the red line represents that revenues at current rates. So that assumes we're not raising rates at all at this point. So this shows us how much we would need to raise rates to fully fund utility. For water, it's a little bit different story. There's a, you can see obviously the the red line is a lot higher in these bar charts and, you know, just barely you can see that there's that yellow bit that's some bit. So it's really in a lot better position. We're not looking at huge increases there, mostly this kind of inflation area. All waste, kind of a similar story, needs to be funded pretty well. You need to raise rates over time. You know, if you were just talking earlier about inflation, right? We all experienced inflation in this last few years, and so did the city, you know. It's all our costs going up, so did the cities, that's the, the idea is, you know, it would be best to increase rates at equal amounts so that keep up with inflation. That's kind of what we're talking about with, with water and followings. Just the incremental increases can keep up with inflation. So getting into the more funding deals. So this is the cost of service, as I mentioned, what we're doing is we're taking one year of the revenue requirement and we're spreading those, those costs or the required revenues into the different customer types. And so we have residential, multifamily, commercial. You see the blue bar represents the current rates, red bar represents the cost of service analysis results. And basically everybody going up a little bit, or a bit, and you can see it, there's like an average look. You know, basically, for an entire year, the average residential, you know, was using about seven thousand gallons, or maybe actually a little bit less, but they rounded up. And then the average multifamily had six units and used about forty eight thousand gallons of water. That is expressed on a per living unit basis, so total bill divided by the six units. So you can kind of see, like, it's always fun to compare between residential and multifamily to kind of just understand that there is a bit of a difference there. And part of the difference is the peak demand. And that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about a little bit more about when we talk about rates or detail. But essentially, you know, the system has to be built to meet peak demand. We can't build it, you know, it's gonna flow, you know, just the same amount at every minute of every day, we have to account for the fact that people use water like a lot, that's seven AM or seven AM around there, and a lot about five PM a lot of times. So, you know, that increase in water demand coupled with fire flow. Fire flow is very important, especially up here, right? You gotta be able to fight those fires, even if it is seven AM or five PM when your water demand is hot. So systems are built to be able to meet both, eat, use and fire. And the next chart that we're gonna see, well, just to dwell on this just a little bit. This bottom row, it just represents represents the difference you have built from that. You can see the system average fourteen, residential, we average using seven thousand gallons, going twelve thousand per month. Multifamily's about half that, commercial, less more water usage.
If I'm reading that correct, multifamily on average uses more water per unit than a residential?
No, that, you have to take that forty eight thousand divided by six. So it's actually quite a bit less.
Looks, that by about six would be eight thousand dollars per unit, and residential says seven thousand.
I'll have to double check that, I mean, uh, I can assure you they actually use less.
So it really looked like there was a significantly better rates for each unit on the multifamily than a, than a single family, right?
Right. And so, you know, obviously there's a connection within their cost and the amount that they use. Instead of anything with multifamily, it's usually less people per household, sometimes not a waste. But also less irrigation per person than say a single family. So that's usually why there's, you know, they have a lower peak demand single family. And that's usually why their, their water and sewer rates are a little bit less.
Also keep in mind that multifamily can be quite a few of your seniors. So they could be applying for the low discount rates, the hardship rates, which is driving those numbers too possibly.
So Kevin, on the, looking at the per living unit residential, the residential one, it says twelve dollars thirty three cents. That's the, that is sort of the proposed increase, what we'd have to go for per month?
For residential, it's.
There's sewer.
Sorry. So for residential, it's any piece of twelve dollars, for multifamily, it's a piece of six dollars.
Okay. That's monthly.
If you use.
If you use the seven thousand.
Right, and we'll talk about it a little bit, a little bit later, but, you know, on average, you know, I think when I looked it up, you have about like two point four or five people per household. And you assume somewhere between a hundred gallons per person or eighty, a hundred is like on the high side. It comes close to that four thousand gallons. So in theory, you're using around the national average water per person, you should be rather than the four thousand gallons.
And if you remember, the four thousand gallons is the top, I would say this is the least confused by. The lowest year that we had, the cheapest price for four thousand gallons was from zero to four thousand gallons. So that's where the four thousand gallons, that makes sense.
So moving on to this slide, this is more a representation of the different costs related to water, water usage. So we look at it on a per gallon basis, for a thousand gallon basis, that's what this is, the bottom will be cost. And what's a kind of point out to you here, same regardless, two dollars twenty cents, because you know, one gallon of water from a commercial versus one gallon from a residential, when all things being equal, should cost the same. But as we were just talking about with capacity, that's where the difference lies. And so when we do the cost of service, we allocate costs to the capacity. And so you can see on average, it's for the whole system, it's just two sixteen, residential's two forty eight, multifamily is that two dollars and ten cents, and commercials one ninety. So that's, that's related to the peak cost, that's, that's meaning, peak day, that's how much you use. For the entire month on, on, at the most, most for that, for, for one day, you know. And then for yellow, this is that fire component, you know. This one has a lot to do with the number of households and the time it takes to fight a fire, and the gallons per minute it takes to fight a fire. So what we essentially do is allocate the fire costs, which is the capacity that we assume to be within your distribution system. And we have, we have assigned a cost to it that represents the relative impact of fighting a fire depending on you know, what type of customer you're on.
And I, do my, so adding a little bit more onto that too, just holistically looking at our water system, we have the residential area that's quite spread out compared to the downtown core. So in the downtown core, as far as the area or the length of distribution we have in that area, the, the area of need in days of fire, it's all very tight and small. And therefore it's a relatively small portion of our system that's dedicated to the downtown, i.e. the commercial accounts. Whereas in the residential area, we have this large area, helps you go much more spread out than in the downtown. And so just the transition rate that we have in that area is substantially more, and factors into this as well. So if they're, you know, in order to, say, serve ten customers in the residential area, we're looking at a much larger area that the distribution system needs to cover versus in the downtown core that could all open. So does that help? Does that help make sense where we're looking at a differentiation between commercial and residential? If it doesn't be that.
Yeah, it's complicated stuff.
It's specific to infrastructure and how much infrastructure you need to serve the same number of customers.
Yes. And then like Kevin's saying too, the peaking component. So in a residential house, the peaking component is really substantial. So, you know, using my house for example, I run all of my things when I first wake up in the morning. I shower and run the dishwasher. Have this huge demand on our water system that levels out through the day. And then I come home in the evening and do the same thing, use all my appliances and have a really large demand on the water system. So that's the diagonal peaks that we look at in a water system. Whereas in the downtown with the commercial businesses, generally speaking, their business is open and water is running, or their business is off and water is not running. And so that's where they don't have that same peaking factor like the residential does. And therefore the residential area needs to be designed to accommodate the capacity of those large spikes where not only me, but all of us are coming home at five PM running all of our appliances. Shave maybe earlier.
I worked with a client that they had a big, like industrial manufacturing and computer chip like thing. And their rate is relatively low compared to residential. And that's not much to the consternation of the residential people, they're like, why do they pay less? So it has to do with the fact that even more so than commercial, they're usually operating coin per hour a day and at a constant rate, so they haven't. So, you know, they're not, we're not having to fill the system yet at one and a half times or two times the pipe size that would otherwise be needed to meet the peak demand for that. So that's kind of, you know, the quick and dirty of water rates.
Is it, is it still, I mean, is it still a thing? I do the laundry on Sundays, the weekends, is that right? Is that save, is that a saving? Is that kind of play into this with, some kind of weekend, are the rates less on a weekend? And I use that example, but also think about the weekend businesses or icicle brewing, and I mean toilets or flushing there on a weekend. Is that included in this peak? And is there a difference between a weekday, Monday, or a Saturday in rigs?
No, we're not really doing these from that perspective. And part of that is we don't have the level of data. You know, electric utilities, you know, a lot of times they do have like on peak, off peak and during the, during the weekend, that's considered off peak all day.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of people on the weekend, even, even though with all those people doing laundry, it's electrically quick and quickly. A lot of times the usage compared to like an average day is still less because less, less business activity is also.
Okay, so just peak is, peak is peak.
Peak is usually like time of day.
Time of day is what we're talking about, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, there's kind of, the way we look at it in the cost of service will always either peak day or week hour. You were kind of referring to peak hours almost. And we don't, we don't have a level, we usually don't go into that level of week to look at it on a hourly basis, we just look at it on a daily basis.
That's the indicator for that month's billing? Is that how that works? Or why is, that's the indicator for this example?
Yeah, basically, we don't, we don't have like dynamic pricing is what you're.
I guess, yeah, I guess that's.
We don't have that. And I don't know, you know, your billing system can handle that. That's something that is really forced right twice.
Shinto's already gone.
If I'm understanding your question, ultimately why we're explaining that is that factors into these, and Kevin threatened from that, is it capacity cost and revenue required cost?
Well, the revenue required cost and the capacity cost, that's kind of the, you know, but it's not a super big difference when you look at this red piece, but it is different. This piece is also it's related to like, basically, it's hard to kind of describe, but essentially when you look at all the different types of sizes. And you say, oh, not well, if we gave everybody a two inch meter or two inch, they're completely waterless, they're a comparison system. You know, times the cost of that, that is a component of the total. Find that by the whole system cost, replace the system cost. And then we look at, okay, well, what if we, what if it's after an hour, so we've been upsized, upsized, maybe. This is a lot very hard to describe without getting more, you know, the words, but it's all about the size of the pipe, essentially. That's what it comes down to, size of the pipe and the cost of the pipe relative to whatever it costs.
The peak.
In the commercial district, let me see what my notes are here. Is a hotel considered a commercial district? Okay, well, I can't imagine that. I think they use oodles of water, especially if they have a pool. And so I'm not sure, I've never been sure and felt very comfortable with commercial so low. Because they flush the toilet way more times, they wash dishes, you know, it's just, they're, they're using a lot more water than the residents are.
Yeah, anyways.
And their pipes are bigger.
Yeah, we think about it from the perspective of, we have a, you know, a big hotel that has a six inch meter. It's all getting piped, you know, there's a, a line from the treatment plant to that hotel. It's pretty much, it's a lot smaller than an equivalent amount of number of big quarter inch residential meters spread out all throughout the city. So it's all based on infrastructure costs. So the cost of, the sort of that that hotel, in a sense, is less when you consider all of the distribution systems, the whole, the sort of the single family.
I don't think it's fair. And in the multi, just thinking in the multifamily, if there's three people in my house, for example, and three people in a multifamily room, you know, whatever they're called, I don't think we use way more than they do. And they still have to flush the toilet, cook dinner, and do everything that a residential, you know, if it's, they're just a multifamily, you would probably a lot more of them in there. So I, I don't think, I think that residential should not be picking up so much of the burden.
And just to add on to that, I believe this is still the base assumption, but I'm on the chair, we're just, we're understanding that this is per thousand gallons as well. So they're still paying, or maybe not this exact month, but everyone is still paying for their usage per thousand gallons, it's just the unbalancedity.
Could we see some bills without names on them of hotels? I mean, how much are they using?
I don't think that's gonna change your decision tonight in order for me to put actual numbers together for you guys for December tenth. I can tell you off the top of my head, your seventy seven dollars that goes to water, you can compare to a hotel with a hundred rooms and their water bill is somewhere between fifteen thousand dollars and higher.
That's not much difference.
That's huge difference.
I don't think so.
Between seven thousand and.
You're paying seventy seven. If you pay seventy seven dollars per month at the base.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, we probably pay seventy seven.
Great. I was hoping we had a couple.
I'll have to just speak through these. Okay, so here it is, that average water use at very bottom, see, Shinto was talking about, this is seventy seven dollars. That falls within the seven thousand gallons that we're assuming is being used. So we're not getting any charge for additional water in the current rate. But then when we shift over to the new rate structure that I said, the four thousand, seven thousand, fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
And we made that a little bit different, where you can see that we're increasing the rate to that, so you can see, you know, it's gonna be roughly ninety to a hundred. So if we just look at twenty twenty five, it's ninety dollars for seventy thousand. Your multifamily, if they were gathered on a living unit. You can see the structure, but, you know, they do use less water per, per household.
So in the summer, we get charged for any water that's over the seventy, seventy five, seven thousand five hundred. Do people in multifamily homes get charged for any more that's over?
They get the seven thousand five hundred in the current rate structure. And so what we're doing, kind of skipping ahead here, but for water, for non-single family homes, we're looking at eliminating that seven thousand five hundred gallons. So for every gallon, or every thousand gallons anybody uses, they will be charged some amount. And the principle behind that is that if, if you're someone who's very conservation oriented, you drive, use less water under this, under this rate structure, your bill will be less than what because we're, we're not just a year, you can seven thousand five hundred gallons, or three, but you're only using two thousand. You know, and we get in charge for that three thousand now.
So if I only use two thousand gallons, I'll only get charged two thousand and seventy five?
Well, it'll be, so if you look, you have our, at the top, we have our meter charges. So currently seventy seven dollars. That includes that seven thousand five hundred gallons.
So you pay up whether you use it or not?
In the current structure, yes. Regardless of how much you use.
Up to that.
But if you go to the twenty twenty five, now you're paying seventy nine dollars. Not a huge difference, actually. But then the tier structure is different. You can see for that first four thousand gallons, you're paying less than a dollar for a thousand gallons. Other than, you know, it was for the, above seven thousand gallons. So you can see the, the ratio, the difference between these different tier sizes, like roughly two times or a double. So the idea behind this is like, the more you use, has a lot to do with that peak use idea that we were just talking about. The more you use, more of an impact you have on the system, or the more you're driving the system to be larger. So you're gonna pay for more per thousand gallons as you increase in these steps or these tiers. So everybody pays that same first four thousand gallons, the same. And as you increase your, your usage in these different tiers, you're gonna pay progressively more.
Do you think, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
I was just saying, so this has to be decided on December tenth?
Yep.
Some hell or high water?
It's a hope. If you choose not to take action, your rates don't change on January one, and that affects your budget.
When would they change? Whenever we.
Whenever you finally adopt the rates. And that will delay capital projects that have all been incorporated in the budget. And that will delay capital projects that have all been incorporated in the budget.
So, um, if we're not raising it that much, why would it delay anything?
This is just one, one utility. He hasn't presented sewer.
Okay.
Or stormwater. And I know residents no longer have garbage with us, but our commercial, well, their family accounts do.
Yeah, so just making sure I'm on the same page, so if I, if I was a standard customer, residential customer who used seventy five hundred gallons and not, not a drop more. This year, I'd pay seventy seven dollars and thirty six cents total.
Yeah.
Next year, I'm the same person, same usage, I'm gonna pay seventy nine fifty two plus just under four dollars. For four thousand gallons, and then another two, four, six, seven dollars, so another eleven dollars, I'd be just under ninety dollars.
That's that eighty nine, that's what it shows is. That's the seventy five hundred if you're paying for everything.
Okay, so that, that would be an additional twelve bucks in person, roughly, okay?
But you can lower that by the.
By using less.
By using less.
So you, I, I think you said this last time, so you've, you've, you've taken all of our, all of the citizens, all the Leavenworth residents. And looked at this past year and said, this is what, this is what people are hitting, and this will satisfy reaching that gap to, uh, cover the infrastructure costs, right? This is all based on assuming that people won't conserve more or pinch pennies, if it goes down, we're not gonna reach that, is there some, some slush in there?
Yeah, it's called, we lack the sea of demand.
Yeah.
And, uh, remember your economics class, essentially with that.
It's gonna stay down.
As the price goes up, you consume less. And so we, we have assumed some amount of the last consumer demand broke, did not, you know. Double digits by any means here, right, in some cases we were above three or four percent, but for the most part, we're assuming that, um. At last this demand is that long. So, I think we need to back up. Let's talk about sewer, so this is a simpler discussion, um. I think the key takeaway is this dotted line, that's the average order, or average sewer cost per thousand gallons. And. Most, the red is the cost of services, so most are pretty close to that line. In, in the cases where it's maybe a little bit higher, like over here in restaurants. That's because it costs more to treat their wastewater, because they have more. Stuff, biochemicals in the air, most defended solids, that sort of thing. Uh, relative to a residential. Even sometimes commercial could be higher than it all. That's, that's really what causes you to be differential, and cost per thousand gallons per keyword is that straight cost of the ball. So, um, this kind of, here's our. Different levels of usage, we just assumed one billing unit for residential. That's on a per living unit for sink, for multifamily, or for commercial. Seven. Rest. So you can see that, you know, some are going down a little bit as a, if, and this is the cost of services, not what we're, what we're proposing in rates necessarily. This is just the results of the analysis. So they're looking like they're overpaying a little bit, multifamilies underpaying a little bit. Then commercial, maybe restaurant, it's like they do a lot of that, you know, like on an average customer basis. For water, you know, it's pretty, it's a lot more straightforward, we're talking about year use, which is usually, um. I think it's like four thousand, you get the four thousand square, uh, per square feet, that's right, and then, um. We're talking about medium and high, that's, um, that change, that, that's a little bit higher cost because they contribute more to the stormwater runoff. But. We're not really, um, showing too much of the difference in cost based on our assumptions, so. If we're, if we assume, you know, any increase, it's gonna be pretty level across all customer classes, and you can see at the bottom. That's pretty small, the increase per, per month. So.
Can you go back to that for just a second? Let me see, change, change per month, let me see.
Eleven cents.
Eleven cents, so what, so is the, the monthly bill, eight, eight dollars and forty six cents?
So it's currently six sixteen.
Okay. And it's going up to tw- six twenty seven. Interesting, it started at fifty cents.
Well. You're talking about school, if I said I also work with the city of Everett, and theirs is like thirty dollars.
I've been told we are extremely low for our stormwater rates. And it's because it's in its infancy stages, we haven't had a stormwater fund, but maybe six, seven years?
A lot of times it was combined with one.
In, in the street.
Streets or some.
Yeah, it was in the street. The most.
So for solid waste, there's basically two ways to consider the cost, one is the tonnage, this is how much you, this is. Close to the amount that you actually pay at the shalane planning bill, right? That's how much they charge the city, uh, for per time, that's what, that's what that cost means, it's a little bit higher if you assume some other costs. That are unrelated to the tonnage, it's also related to the tonnage. I, I say, unrelated to the, um, shalane charge, there's a little bit contributed to the time to keep her pace hold. But primarily that twenty one dollars is roughly how much per, it's, it's higher for sure, but pretty posting what it costs actually to, to dump a ton of trash. The other component is the cost to actually go out and pick it up. And we have a weekday and weekend split, you can see forty two dollars for a weekday for one pickup. And a weekend is sixty nine dollars, so it's a bit higher in the, in the, in the weekend. As reflected in the rates currently, but it's not a big, a big change by any means. But, um, tonnage varies by container size. But the pickup part is always really, I mean, there's no, not much of a difference in picking up a sixty four gallon can and dumping it. Versus ninety six gallons. It's just, it's not really, uh, not really a minimal difference.
So Kevin, that's what they, commercial district pays for each pickup, forty two dollars, and if it's the weekend, they pay almost seventy?
Yeah.
Over this time of the class?
Yeah, I'm based on a custom.
Yeah.
And that's a, like the green bar, current rate, so that is a weekly rate, correct, one day a week?
Uh, yeah, for one day, one container, so there, you know, you have a, a lot of different types of customers, you'll have. You know, one customer that gets picked up one day a week, but they have to be more than one container, or they get picked up, they only have one container, but they get picked up. You know, five days a week, so the weekdays, and then another customer that only gets picked up on the weekends, so there's a lot of different variables. Uh, but all of that gets picked up in like, how the cost nerves balance and, and we show here. And if you, this is the, this is the dumpster, if you're gonna get on the container and how it looks currently versus like how it, um, would be on, with the cost of service. And I think of note here, again, these are the same size containers, fifty seven, sixty eight. Is the same for a weekday, for a weekend, but the forty two dollars and almost seventy dollars, that's the amount to go out and pick it up on. Versus weekly. All right, now the fun part, the rate design, so when we, um, talked about redesigning the water rates. There were a number of different things we wanted to look at. One was increased water efficiency. Another one is reducing back the low, uh, the water hazards relative to everybody else. Um, maintain revenue stability, so, um, the current rate structure, um. Might be ninety four percent, I think, of the revenue is collected from the fixed charge. So we just reduced the down to like, right, so we reduced it just a little bit. So, that, what that means is that, you know, uh, the stability of that revenue is fairly, um, constant with like that. Four percent difference only happening in the summer. So I already looked at this one a little bit, um. So, basically, you know, when we did, when we looked at the four thousand gallon. Tier, that was, as I just talked a little bit earlier about, you know. Two point four, four or five people per household, it's somewhere between a hundred gallons or eighty, uh, eight or eighty gallons per day per person. You know, that's where it's very close to that four thousand gallons, but also I would guess specifically, um. Uh, Leavenworth water use to see kind of how that panned out, and in the winter time, it was generally pretty close to that four thousand gallons. For the average person.
In the winter?
In the winter, we, we, no, there was a creepers going off.
Four thousand a month? Yeah. Do you know what the average was in the summer?
I, I should, if I tell you it's around twelve.
Twelve thousand?
With, then, with the thousand seventy percent.
Yeah, you're right, exactly, that's. Good, good, good memories.
What was that for the summer?
Um, I think that it was, it's seventy percent of the water consumption was less than ten thousand gallons per person, per household.
But that includes irrigation?
Right. Some, some irrigation, but not the heavy irrigations. And then also, I mean, so essentially, when we talked about above the four thousand gallon mark. It was, I was looking at the percentages, so how much, so as she does, Andy had mentioned, seventy percent was using less than ten thousand. I believe it was ninety percent were using less than fourteen thousand. So, you know, above that, which is, you know, the ten percent of all water users is using above that, so very few use above that fourteen thousand gallon.
Yeah.
So this kind of represents like how the rates compare to present rates based on different gallons, like consumption. You can see at four thousand gallons, you're fixing about six dollars and thirty cents. Twelve thousand gallons, maybe two dollars, so, you know, thirty five dollars, the increase way up there, maybe twenty thousand, because of ton of water.
Does it increase further out or just like?
Um, if we, if we extended this out, it would, we would continue to diverge, diverge between the two bars. The gap that they, that happens.
Well, yeah, like you said, that's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Like, I think the most I've ever used was eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand gallons. In a month.
You know. I had a broken stricture system, and I think I lived in Spokane, their water is super cheap for a thousand gallons, they go higher fixed chart, but. You know, I think I ended up paying for, for the highest month was like three hundred dollars.
Wow.
Yeah. I was like, I gotta fix that thing. All right, so this is basically the same stuff, except for we pushed it out a number of years. These rates have been kind of phased in over a period of time. Um, so when we did, if we looked at, you know, where we needed to go, and, and in the last year, how we were gonna get there, so we kind of, we kind of flattened it out a little bit. Uh, so it was a little less of an impact right away.
Wait, just, just so I, I know I'm tracking right, in twenty twenty four, is that the seventy five thousand gallons?
Seventy five.
I mean seventy five hundred gallons.
Yes.
And in two thousand twenty nine, that hundred and twenty four ninety seven is for.
Trip the meter, and then if you were to factor in. You know, if, that's the bottom, yeah, you're basically.
Average building tax.
Be about a hundred and forty dollars, watching out for twenty one.
If you continue. Twenty twenty nine, and that's for the seventy five hundred gallons.
Only seven thousand, it's off by five hundred.
Now they, and now we've lost five hundred more gallons we can't use, unless we'll pay more.
Um. Maybe it would have been better if I made that seventy five for consistency, but, um, when we, when we look at this, you know. What's going in use right here is five hundred gallons, because you're only using seven thousand, but you're allowed seventy five hundred. So even if you're not using seven thousand five hundred gallons, you're, you're getting charged for it, and that's kind of the key to this type of customer. Or this type of rate design is that there's no incentive to really, you know, try to use less on the, on the lower side. Because you're gonna get charged for it, maybe. This has a lot to do with our conservation too, if you're being charged for every gallon of water, for every thousand gallon of water. You know, uh, cutting back makes a lot more of a difference once you have. Tears that are trusted more like this, I think obviously you're scared of loans, especially at the last years, it's trumped them all, you know. Even, um, it's more impactful if you use a lot more water.
This is quite a jump, if I'm reading it right, between two thousand twenty five and, and two thousand twenty six compared to two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty five, it's just a couple dollars. Uh, now it's jumping up like twenty dollars.
Well, if you look at this, this area here. You can see that the difference is twelve dollars, one thirteen dollars, sixteen dollars, seventeen dollars.
Okay, so what's the one above the top, the top line above? Which one are we supposed to be looking at?
The three quarter meter.
That, and that's what we have?
Most, most residential homes have three quarters.
I'm just wondering why the jump between two hundred and twenty five and twenty six is so big?
From the seventy nine.
Yeah, yeah, to ninety two, and then, you know, when you look at two thousand four to five, it's only a couple dollars. And then all of a sudden, it's a lot more than a couple dollars, and it's a lot more than a couple dollars.
It's.
No, it's the bottom, you wanna look at the bottom, because you're gonna go from a seventy seven dollar.
Yeah.
A month charge to an eighty nine dollar charge to a hundred and three, you have to look at the bottom for your bill impact.
Okay, the, what says additional hardship or bottom, what bottom?
The very bottom.
Average bill impact, that's the difference.
The, the first four thousand gallon, or that one, that's.
That's assuming seven thousand use.
That's, that's, that's all based on seven thousand versus the previous year, so that's the difference between. That year and the previous year for seven thousand.
Depending, the top numbers are for four thousand.
Oh, God.
The top numbers are just your meter charge, that's without using any water at all, you just have a meter charge.
Oh.
So basically, the way it currently is, is you pay seventy seven dollars thirty six cents. Some of that is related to what we would consider a meter charge. And then seven thousand five hundred gallons is related to how much water is, is contained within. Now what we've done is we've pulled out that seven thousand five hundred gallons and reconfigured the, the tiers. So now, if you use, if you use zero, or that's how much you would pay for this top one.
So this is a different.
And twenty twenty four is, is, is seven five hundred. And is that, and then what are the other years?
There's a structure that cut it out when you're. Ninety eight cents, so it's four. So Sharon, I think the, like Anne said, maybe not looking at the top, but focusing more on the bottom, the difference in cost here every year might, might make it a little bit more clear. Uh, from twenty four to twenty five, we're looking at twelve dollars.
Okay.
And then from twenty five to twenty six is thirteen dollars and seventy one cents. And ultimately, what Kevin and Shentel and I worked on here was, like Kevin said, flattening this out, instead of having, whatever it would be, a thirty percent increase. In one year with the new rate structure, we intentionally tackled this, so that we switch over in structure. In twenty five, and then increase over time until we get up to where we need to be with our water rates. So that someone doesn't have, you know, what I mean, a sixty, this is like a fifty dollar build increase off the bat, instead we're going to.
And what drives this is the fact that we have a, had rates that incorporated the capital use to the extent that we have.
To the extent that we have. Place our infrastructure.
Right.
And so that's what this is jumping up for is to give us those dollars that we can use. For capital projects and covering debt on those projects as well as some of it coming out of. Right. The operations just all.
Kevin, I wanted to ask you, so twenty twenty-four, you use seventy-five hundred gallons a month. And then the next, next year, you, you get it down to where you're using four thousand, four thousand. So how do you track what your bill is going to be then if you just use four thousand gallons for the next four years?
So if you're going to use only four thousand gallons, it's going to be the seventy-nine dollars plus four times the ninety-eight cents.
Okay, that's what it is. It's the seven nine fifty-two plus four times.
Plus four dollars, basically four dollars, so it'd be eighty-three, eighty-three.
The industry is moving away from having that, that, I'm seeing it not included in the base chart, but. There is a certain amount of equity. Obviously, if you're a single person, you know, living in an apartment. You're not going to use seven thousand by the law, slightly, but you're, but you're paid for.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you rate, if you kept it at four thousand, it would just stay there?
We're not keeping anything at four thousand, that's just.
The bigger structure shows up every year.
So no matter what we're proposing, if you're using four thousand gallons, you have to pay four times.
The law like tax brackets, right? If you, if you do your taxes.
That's what they go up. Only four thousand goes up to about fifty afterward.
Is taxed at like ten percent, right? I'm probably wrong. Then the next, you know, thirty thousand dollars is that, that, you know, uh, like twelve percent or something like that. That's what this is. Uh, creating a, a structure so that. The first four thousand gallons, you're gonna, you're gonna pay only ninety-eight cents per thousand gallons. But then once you breach that, and then you get into that next tier, so like you're not asking a tax bracket. It's, we're not saying that you're gonna pay, if you use ten thousand gallons, it's, you know, two dollars and one cents times ten thousand. You're still paying, uh, four thousand, four times ninety-eight cents, and then six times the two dollars and one cent.
I see a lot of brown yards.
Yeah.
And that's a firewise issue, isn't it?
Well, that's, that's, it's definitely a policy.
See a lot of people not growing their own food anymore.
You know, the idea of conservations, that's the big part. And you know, we'll be talking a little bit more about that.
If you have an example that shows that.
So, uh, multifamily, um, for, for non-single family, what we did was we just. We just picked out that seventy-five, seventy-five hundred gallons, and now we're charging. This amount for every thousand gallons. So that plus, that times the, the volume, the volume.
So you'll notice on multifamily, you don't have the tier structure like we have for residential. And Kevin can speak to this more, but that is intentional, whereas, uh, on the single family side of things, that we just consider residential in this. We have the data and we can understand what an average uses across houses. But in multifamily, it's not well defined, it's not clear. Who's being geared where, what irrigation, how that's being shared. And so we can't drive conservation in the same way on multifamily and commercial. Instead, that's why we have just one dollar now that they pay for a thousand gallons. And Kevin's expert, he can speak to it sort of like.
Right, I mean. A lot of it has to do with what would be considered efficient use still. And for a single family person or a single family home. You know, we can say if you're using four thousand gallons, you're probably pretty efficient. But when we look at it from single family, we don't know exactly how much every living unit is being. Uh, is it actually consuming? Because they're usually not sub-meters, so, you know, I remember when I lived in an apartment. I just got, you know, my portion of the total bill. And that was as, doing this kind of work, it always kind of made me mad because I'm like. I live alone. Don't use a lot of water.
Right.
And I live next to, you know, three family, uh, three family other inmates, they all pay the same.
Right.
So there's no way to determine what is efficient use for, you know, multifamily or commercial. It was to say that, um, you know, commercial, whatever they're doing is inefficient. It could just be, you know, what they have to do to, to be in business.
So if their cost goes, I mean, if, if they use more gallons one month for the next, doesn't matter, they're gonna only pay a flat fee?
No, no, they all go up. So if they use more one month, it'll be up. They use less, it will go down.
And who's, who's paying that if, it's, if there's several, uh, families in, you know, their own unit? How does that get figured?
It depends on the unit. We've got three units, four units, five units, six units, eight units.
It's about how the owner just.
A lot of the owners have a single bill because there's only one meter feeding the entire home. And so they have to break it up, like Kevin was just saying, how he was treated. They broke it up, everybody paid the same share. Maybe what they should have did in Kevin's case is done it by the number of people in the unit. Make it a little more fair. He only pays one tenth of ten people. But the neighbor next door with four people pays four tenths.
Is that what we do too?
It, we only have a one bill, it goes to one owner, that owner then divvies it up. Now, if they have multiple meters on a multifamily complex. So let's say they have an individual meter going to every unit. Each one of those units has its own meter, has its own bill. They all pay the base rate, they all pay usage rates. They don't build them like.
Yeah, whether they have single or the whole thing, it's the same price in the end. I mean, it's a total amount of dollars in the end.
They're, they're charged the same per unit.
Assuming the same.
For the water use for that month.
Yeah.
Okay, so same discussion, you know, we took away the seventy-five hundred gallons and we set it equal so that. They all pay the same rate for the, the amount of water they use. So I, if you have a three-quarter inch meter with thirty-four thousand gallons, there's the dollar difference. We, uh, we're mostly, we, we saw in those assumptions. More often, you can see like, of course, the meter size, you know, the rate for each meter does increase, everything goes up, that's pretty standard. And it's based on like capacity, so, but for the most part. You had that more three-quarter inch meter, commercial gallons than, than anything else, so that's why.
So Sharon, you'll see that the commercial doubles from now until two thousand twenty-nine. So that's the highest percentage increase of all of them. If that's, you're kind of alluding to that earlier, they should pay a little bit more. We're, we're realizing that, I think, now with this program.
Well, they're using thirty-four thousand gallons compared to our seventy-five hundred. Right, am I reading that right?
Well, um. You know.
And they have a bigger meter.
They have bigger meters, they pay for the efficiency. For the larger meter, but everybody's paying some amount per thousand gallons. So it's variable. So if these guys actually, you know, they, they could, they could have used seven thousand five hundred gallons. You know, it would have just been, you know, fifty-seven dollar. That's that down again. Uh, fifty-seven dollars, and then, um, seven point five, I mean, this is the one, or. That's, that, that's what the bill would be if you were to say, I wasn't thirty-four thousand, you know. This is not assuming that everybody's using that amount. This is just a, an average amount that I found. In and out of it was provided. The average commercial.
So commercial accounts are typically just getting hit harder because they're running three, two, or one and a half inch meters. So they're paying it on the front end in the base rate, definitely. And then we need.
Use a great start, a very similar, if you know, actually, but pretty close to us eventually. I think we're all gonna run, have to run for our lives.
But it's that meter size, with that initial base rate, that really drives commercial accounts.
And so like you're saying, at a hotel, that was what he was saying earlier, Sharon, was if you pay seventy, you're paying seventy-seven dollars a month for the base rate now personally, the lowest amount, let's say. Typically, a hotel would pay fifteen thousand dollars per month.
And don't quote that, but.
That's a big difference, right? When you say it's this, you're looking at, maybe it's, oh, it's close to eighty dollars, that's kind of close to my seventy-seven dollars. They're paying fifteen thousand dollars per month, not seventy-seven, when it's all adds up. That makes sense?
Just to give you an idea, let's say eleven, like this is the largest water user. On monthly utility bills for all of our locations and all the watering that we do. Runs between thirty-two and thirty-five thousand dollars a month. That's water, sewer, stormwater, and garbage combined.
According to the same plan, I mean, that's.
Oh, I've seen what the rate increase is gonna do to us.
Yeah, so that's current.
Right now, today, we are paying between thirty-two and thirty-five thousand per month for, for all of our city-owned facilities.
Where does the money come from? The water money that we pay?
All, all different places, Sharon, all different places. Lobbying tax pays, jungle fund pays, the street fund pays, the garbage fund, the water fund, the sort of. Everybody's using water, sewer, garbage, right? So think about the water treatment fund. They have their own water bill, they have their own sewer bill, they have their own garbage bill, and they have their own stormwater bill. So now add that up for all of our city buildings, facilities, parks. We go through a lot of water. We're watering every park, we're watering the cemetery.
Can we have lodging tax? If I invite somebody over to stay.
I charge a majority of our parks watering.
I wish.
A majority goes to lodging.
But we did it six thirty-five, so.
Yeah.
You know, push us to keep in the project.
So sewer, we didn't change the structure whatsoever. We just said we're going to decrease rates, you know. Relative to whatever before, so, and this is the part I'd like. For a single family, we're not increasing it at all for these two years. We're only increasing it four dollars per month after that. So yes, water is going up.
Right.
A bit, but sewer is not.
Yeah.
So that's your kind of, you know, block side, I think. So we're going to see a bill, a slight intermediate bill, kind of hopefully put in the economy.
So what, what's, real quick, what's the commercial? I know they're paying based on their water usage, so what is that? What's that average that you're showing for a commercial base? What's additional for?
Well, this is sewer, they only charge per billing unit, so it's kind of based on the RU tax situation, so. Um, usually what happens is, you know, the city would look at the type of business it is, and, you know. Roughly how much water they use or what size meter they have, and they'd be like, oh, well, we think you're five billing units, or we think you're two billing units, or one billing. There is based on different types of business. Obviously, like a brewery would be, you know, a bit higher than, uh, you know, a restaurant. Takes a lot of water from beer.
We actually calculate every single commercial account annually. And it's what utility staff are upstairs waiting for, because they have two hundred accounts that they have to touch individually. What we do is we look back at an entire year of water use, because sewer for commercial accounts is driven on water use.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, it's, it's a very complicated process, and it does take several weeks. For finance to program that all into the billing system.
A lot of turns what cities do is, you know, they'll look at winter water, so they'll say, you know, that, you know. We're not, not doing anything other than indoor water use. Usually indoor water use flows directly down the drain, which means the sewer. You know, rather than spraying it on the lawn or, you know, washing the car in the driveway.
And we do use the full year because of our tourism and how things do this. So if we try to just do a few months, we might be benefiting for one business, but not another. So we actually grab, I believe it's October one through September thirty. And we snapshot the total water, and then we, we build the rate.
Alright, so water, you know, again, it's pretty simple. You can see, you know, the twelve cents, thirteen cents, it's kind of just runs out there, pretty modest increase, um, anywhere for families. All of these, this is all based on the, uh, pickups in the weekday versus pickup in the weekend. And also the volume, each bill is due, the tonnage, that's how these rates are all set up.
So for a bear-proof can, it's sixty-six fifty-three, but for a sixty-four gallon can, then it's twenty gallons in a bear-proof can.
This is the slide I was trying to give you. So, and we took, at two different gallons. One, they used very little water, they had a zero-scape lawn, meaning that they didn't have like plants and stuff. Another one had, um, a lot of lawn, and possibly more.
Definitely more.
Yeah, sort of like lawn. So you can see that when we look at the.
Tell me since your house.
Andy and Andy's versus Andy's next door. Both are two, both have two people, two humans.
Two humans.
Two humans.
Um, and I, nearly identical yards. And so we had to have to pull our bills and compare the difference so that we can kind of show you what that looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for, for Andy, her water bill is pretty flat normally, you know. And with the new rates, now that we're changing the tiers around, it's gonna have a higher little bump right there in the middle of something.
Yeah.
Whereas, so we. There's already a little bit of a bump because you can smell water, because the broken stricture system. But if we apply the new rates, it goes up at a higher, higher, higher level than.
Guess who's fixing his sprinkler system?
I guess I did want to add to the point about like three yards and growing vegetables, things like that, but. With this water usage, we do still have unguarded, like we still have a backyard that's grass.
Right.
Uh, and that is what, one of my. Whatever.
Forty-five.
Forty-five gallons.
Right, yeah.
I'd be curious, I think, there was, you mentioned it before, and I, I think there was somebody was looking into it with, um, some grants for zero-scape and changing. It's very costly, and I don't know if it's what the city has to kick in with some of those. It'd be nice to un, unroll that maybe to the community as well if there's a price. Rate increase, but also we've been thoughtful about other opportunities for people to conserve at the same time or within. Next year to unhold that.
Does that, where they, they give you some amount of money, uh, per square foot. Uh, you know, moving along, you know, zero scape, not, not, not changing out with some other kind of plant that actually moving.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know what it is, but it's built in the rates, you know, they have, uh, a department called conservation. And they've assumed a certain amount of use, you know, a certain amount of people are gonna do that. In my neighborhood, you know, I know there's at least four houses I walk by. Off my dog, that they've done just that. It's all gravel.
I think it's okay. Give me those questions, like, is it?
I think it's okay. I mean, it really depends on how you do it. Like, one was like a lot of rocks and it was very, you know, artistically done. Another one was just wood chips. So, you know, how you feel about wood chips versus rocks, but of course the cost is hugely different too. And when you're in Spokane, it's a dollar per square foot, regardless of what you actually do. So.
I'll make sure, take it off the water.
Nobody really responded.
One of the things that some people stipulate also is that if you do zero-scape it or definitely build a different system, you can have it. Because a lot of people put in a zero-scape amount of water.
It washes the dust off the rock.
That was really the payoff, is this is all those different, this is water, sewer, and storm. So you can kind of see, you know, if we're, we're not too different. When we talk about, you know, this hundred fifty dollar mark, right? And you add it all together because we're not increasing sewer at all, it, it kind of adds, it can be used out. So, um, for fun, we decided to look at other, uh, rates on the, this general facility. And this is something that a lot of folks like to see, but I'll tell you, you know. Every system is different. We don't know what challenges they might. Every system is different. We don't know what challenges they might have. And how much capital they have to pay for in their turn. Could be the, you know, they've been very, you know, diligent and chipping away at capital. You know, every year as it goes, or they neglected it for many, many, many years and stealing all over the place and they just, they, they, you know. Spent a whole bunch of money, so we don't know. How that factors in here, almost know that there's a difference. And. It is. For what it's worth, I say.
It's interesting.
So, um, we talked briefly about the system development charges. And essentially. System development charges, we charge for new customers. With the idea that. As a new customer comes on, they pay this charge and it creates equity between them. And the customers that are already on the system and have paid for and built the system up to that point. That make sense? It really comes down to, you know, we know that the existing capacity is, you know. Ten thousand or whatever units that might be. So we're only using seven thousand units. And so the remainder between seven thousand and ten thousand. We need to allocate those costs to the new customers that come on for. For, uh. For units, for, for a single family home or whatever. Then we add on to the future costs, so this is all related to capacity. So, um, as we look forward. And new customers comes on, there's gonna be a point where we no longer have capacity and now we need incre- increased capacity to be, to be able to, um. To serve these new customers. And you really don't, the whole idea, we don't want our existing customers having to pay for some future customers. You know, um. System expansion. So this is basically establishing a, a cost for, uh, for. For units, for, for capacity, for new, uh, customers. And that's what your system development charge is. So we jump over to there. Wow, look, new differences. Water currently three thousand eight hundred ninety nine. But when I calculated, it goes up to thirteen thousand dollars. The important part to point out here is that this is the maximum allowable. Though there are Washington state laws that kind of. Loosely tell you what you should and shouldn't do, not very specific, but. Um, we, we do this calculation, we can't go above that calculated, no. Some people, people go less. Some people, people write up that number.
And I did want to point out that this would be the same across any of the classes. Uh, so the residential, multifamily or commercial, you have the same system development charge proportionately, so like Kevin said, it's per. ERU equivalent residential unit. So for example, Lenworth knows, oh, I don't remember what their ERU, that was off the top of my head, but. In the spectrum of maybe two hundred ERUs, so they're paying. Yeah, like. Like two hundred times that. Whereas residential, like a single family home.
Did we increase this six years ago to the? This number?
It's, it's been a long time since we've done SDCs.
And I, I meant to look it up, but we were thinking it's been at least ten years.
So.
We didn't do it in our last six year study.
Um, an important factor that a lot of people take into account though is that. Whatever they decide to set the SDC at, they update it every single year. Just based on index, so it's like construction cost index from the engineering record or some other index that says, okay, well. Inflation for building materials was this amount, we're gonna apply that to this number every single year going forward. So that helps keep the, uh, keep you up to date so that you don't fall behind like you are now. And, you know, ten years down the line, now the line, you're not having to make a huge emergency. It may be different based on how much construction and capacity related projects you actually do, but it'll keep you. It'll keep you close.
So when is this charged? Is this a hookup fee? For new development? So even if someone's building a tiny little ADU in their backyard to add another unit, they're gonna. Pay over twenty thousand dollars now to get their connections made. But they have to have a separate.
And if you adopt the highest maximum.
So right now in our code, an E, uh, ADU over nine hundred square feet has to have separate utilities.
Right.
And also if the eight, like, I guess we've kind of talked about this a bit internally, but if the ADU is specifically a component. Uh, in the future, after we adopt rates, we could also look at. Or different rates for ADUs.
This is a lot of topic, actually, a lot of places. You know, initially this is okay, any ADU is one ERU. But now people have been looking at it a little bit separately. Sometimes people go to eighty percent of an E, you know, an ERU for an ADU.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, like, we're constantly. Trying to amend our code to encourage infill and additional unit development, but this just drives the cost of development up.
Sometimes, sometimes it's based on the number of fixtures.
Very good point.
So they're looking at if they do an ADU with the new rates. It's twenty thousand, twenty thousand.
An ADU is over nine hundred square feet.
It was over nine hundred.
It has to have its own hookups.
Which has to.
Which that's the code that we're talking about. It specifies if your ADU is over nine per square feet, you have to have separate utilities.
But every new single family residence would be paying that.
Otherwise it's seven.
Every new single family residence.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and switch.
Quick question for you. In your calculations, did you use that maximum build out number to balance the budget?
We usually don't do that because we don't know when that. All at once in ten years from now. So it's hard to, you don't wanna, you don't want that kind of risk.
I was just curious if you had placed that in at some level, but no.
But it, it'll help out hopefully any.
So we go somewhere under nine hundred feet.
Absolute.
Then you get to use your existing.
Same as you.
So all new residents.
This is a hypothetical, like if you wanted to like phase these into the maximum over a number of years. And you can kind of see water I paid in over five years because that was the biggest increase. Sewer I paid in over two years because that was the second biggest increase in the minutes. Increase the storm. Pretty, uh, straight line. So, you know. Currently was at seven thousand, three thousand. It's very low up to me. It was seven.
Sorry, we can map.
Well, this was just, this was not necessarily, um. You know, widely discussed, which is something I understood others. Just to also reinforce the idea that this is. We're not, we're talking about the maximum allowable. And not what you actually decide to be.
Just to be clear, the, the maximum allowable that you presented is your assessment of what the true cost is.
Of, of unit of capacity.
Unit of capacity, so we're trying to, we're trying to basically pay for the infrastructure that's necessary to serve the population. Based on all the assessment you got.
Right, there's some, some amount of payback. You know, because of the existing capacity. There's some amount of pay forward, pay forward for the new capacity that then have to be increased.
Kevin, what does SDC stand for again?
System Development Charge. They may go by a lot of different names.
I guess really quickly, just to, um, touch on that, maybe, oh, yeah, I was just gonna say that Health Bill thirteen thirty seven, that's, they call the ADU bill. Uh, has a provision that we're going to have to adopt where we cannot, uh. The impact fee, so the system development charges can't exceed more than fifty percent of what's assessed for the primary hall. So for an ADU, if it was over nine hundred square feet, they'd charge, we had to charge fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
So it wouldn't be that full quantity.
Right, yeah.
But if it's under nine hundred, it, it's with the new code, we have to allow up to two ADUs per block. So if you had two nine hundred square foot, they don't.
Thanks, Maggie.
And then we're getting close to the end here. This is just a comparison again from different communities, what theirs were. Um, you know, I have your average, your current. Current level of maximum allowable, you can see it's widely. Dispersed there, a lot of different charges. As well, again, similar to the water rate discussion, uh. They have different challenges and. You know, managed it in a different way that we have caused. Um, and increase or decrease in the, in the SDC, or they may not have changed it for many, many, many years, more than ten years, perhaps. You know, Quincy, obviously, that's a pretty small number for just two utilities, this is just two utilities, because London didn't have stormwater.
So the maximum allowable is state mandated, right?
Uh, well, the state just says that you can't go over this amount based on the calculation that I did. Based on, uh, available capacity and new.
I was curious why Cleland was so tired.
Eighteen thousand, I mean, we see that.
Right, yeah.
Well, would be.
The developers of Sun Cadia upgraded their infrastructure for them and now they're paying them back. So they're gouging new development because of the upgrades that Sun Cadia provided.
Which I've been hearing. For the whole time I've worked here, people come in during public presentations through. The big growth that happened by Safeway before it ever happened, the folks behind that live back there were saying. You need to increase your SDCs.
Right, right, yeah.
And we didn't.
In some cases, it's like, if you have a developer agreement, you know, that, that calculation could be much different and there's not a lot of. Like legal, uh, basis for what that fee might be, it's been worked with. There's a big area that they just annexed. And it's all set by developers, so. They're like, well, you're gonna pay for all the, all the upgrades to the infrastructure period. So what we did is we went and said, okay, well, they're gonna have as many ERUs, this is the total cost. Divide through, that's that much every single. Single family had to pay.
Those SDCs can be adjusted each year?
Yeah, basically, I, I recommend giving. A year based on some index.
So the cost of lumber two years ago was, was, uh, through the roof, so the previous city councils chose not to address this.
Concrete often increases at a higher rate. It's for, it actually stays by this, their gentleman is being kicking a higher rate towards steel.
Your predecessors, quite a few of them were, um. Development supportive. And because we went through many, many years of no development. That's why SDCs didn't get touched, because they wanted to keep costs low to spur development to occur.
I don't, I don't want to like say that. There's a lighter home answer to any of that, some people, some cities just. Saying that we're only gonna do thirty percent of whatever the maximum level was. Just to, um, encourage, you know, and that's their city. Your decision as well.
So I did a rough estimate just based on the budget. From what I put in the budget, which for a single family residential, that would be zero for garbage. Fifteen percent for water, ten percent for sewer. And three percent for stormwater. What I'm seeing is about an eighteen dollar per month increase for twenty twenty five. All combined. And for twenty twenty six, it would be an additional almost twenty one dollars. So over the two year biennium, we're talking about forty dollar increase. Based on what's in the budget. Now you guys can choose to do less, what that means is Andy and I go back to the drawing board and cut projects.
And as a reminder, I know the last presentation I gave was, um, about. Integrated Capital Improvement Program and just the status of where our infrastructure is. And ultimately, that is why we do have this. Rate increase is ultimately we have failing infrastructure. And this is the only way that we're actually going to be able to tackle that for real. Uh, and like we've mentioned before, with our streets that are in really poor condition. It's ultimately because we have utilities underneath that are failing and the only way that we're actually going to be able to tackle that. Is to have these rate increases so that we can replace the water and sewer links that are underneath and then repay our roads.
And those are tied, there's some other opportunities with some matching funds, I mean, all that does come into play as well. We've gotta get these monies going to get other monies.
Absolutely.
Which is.
But we can't, so. We, we've essentially like undermined TIB stress, the education for the board, and they have told us. That unless we start making our plea, that they will not fund any improvement projects. And, and really, truly, this is the way that we prove our trust to them is. By only feeding over utilities that are in good condition, where we're not gonna have to go cut into their brand new, like. The twelve road cuts we have on West Street that was done.
Half of them in front of mine.
Kevin, realistically, if we were to say. Run for it with what you've done. Would you be able to give me actual red line rates tomorrow for me to build into our rate and fee schedule for them to look at? Okay, by Monday. Are the numbers pretty much there? Yeah, and then it's just me plugging them in. I'll leave time on the deadline. Without the packet deadline makes it very difficult because the actual deadline for this next meeting. Is, would normally be this Friday. So, because you guys get an extra week to review your packets, so we're currently, when it comes to packet time. I may have to produce the utility rates in red line the night of December. But we do need direction from you in order to move steps forward.
Wouldn't that would be change the date and you compiled it? No.
Well, I'm still gonna do what I'm gonna do. Like I said, I may not give you the red lines on water sewer, stormwater and garbage, so like the night of. Maybe I can get it to you a couple days early, we can just email it to you. But realistically, he's gotta get it to me and then I have to go into the fee schedule and change everything. Which takes a few hours for me, it's not, it's not rocket science or anything, but. It is a matter of, yes, you guys want us to move forward, yes, Kevin has to give it to Chantel, and then I can enter it.
Can lodging tax be used for any of that, like making roads better or anything?
We hit lodging tax every opportunity we possibly can. And we. Push the envelope that we can.
I just wondered, cause they probably travel the streets more than we do.
Your decision?
You give them them direction.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any way to give you a quick decision, that's a lot of information and it's startling rate increase suggestions. And I feel like that needs to, that's worthy of. A pretty dynamic conversation before we can give direction, because there's a lot going on there.
So we, we should talk about that then. How, how are we going to do that? Um. We can skip implementing rates for January one. So that gives you time, cause you're, you're in December, you're coming into December, which is. Holidays, you're planning to cancel Christmas Eve.
Maybe we don't cancel the second, um.
Well, that's Christmas Eve.
I'd happily be there so that we could fill into that more, and if you wanted to have the marked up rate and fee structure. And look at that together, I guess, what is, what are the next steps you guys want from us? What additional information do you want from us in order to make your decision?
I'd like to vote on it.
Well, I think, I think one thing that I'm not really clear on, you know. If you, if you don't adopt the, the max, if the max is the accurate number of what it costs. And that's what we assume based on the expert opinion. Then, then that's what we should do if we wanna actually make the dent in one of the biggest fights around here and that's our infrastructure. And our ability to have paved roads, we gotta actually do something about it. It's painful, right? Waiting is not gonna make it any easier, but it is a big number and, and a lot of the systems is gonna hurt. And so. This is, this is what we're here for, right? So if we need to have an inner meeting to go over this and, and. Decide as a council what we wanna do for our citizens to move our town forward. Or to shield us from something that's eventually gonna happen anyways. The infrastructure is gonna have to be replaced at some point. And we will, everybody talks about the roads wanting to be done.
It's gonna get cheaper, it's gonna get cheaper.
I guess, I guess, I. I don't wanna be like scared to the point of inaction because it's gonna cost more money. Because that's what it costs. Because that's what it costs.
Right, so. I guess some questions that have arisen from me is. There were obviously a lot of capital projects over the course of the next. Five, six years that were built into the suggested rate increases, right? What are all those projects and you know? Can we can we prioritize projects and is there a way for us to? Have like a larger conversation with the community about. What are the priority projects and and what are not priority projects that give us some leniency on those rate increases? And and have that conversation, right? What does it look like if we? Do fifty percent of what's recommended versus a hundred percent of what's recommended, right? Because I know in the past the council has done that, they're like, well, we just. We can't justify it, that's just such a massive rate increase, it's not. It's not fair to a majority of our citizens, particularly our senior citizens who are on fixed incomes like. I mean, over the course of the next. Five years, it's going from a hundred and forty seven ninety seven to two hundred and twenty five dollars. I mean, nobody's salaries are increasing by that percentage rate over the next five years. You know?
We can happily continue this conversation at a next meeting.
Yeah.
Frankly, like the real answer is no. No, we cannot just de-prioritize these projects, we have de-prioritized projects to the point that we have absolutely failing infrastructure in our city. And we have to do something about it. Either we can continue to go after emergency projects like we did, for example, last year on Pine Street, we had a watering that had so many failures in it. Our only option was to replace it last, I don't remember if it's October, November? I think it's the first thing in the tree light.
Yeah.
Because it had failed to such a point that we could not fix it. So we have reached this critical point where if we don't make these investments and actually tackle these projects. We're just going to have emergencies that we continue trying to tackle.
So where where can we, when can we have an ongoing discussion? Cause we've gone beyond.
I think this needs its own special meeting to be.
Follow up with me via email with what information you'd want me to prepare for that meeting, what specific things you wanna look at together? I would be happy to prepare whatever I have for that meeting.
So we will need to, what's? What time, when, when? Are we gonna get this sometime between the next one on the tenth and before. We normally would have on the twenty fourth, so seventeen, this Tuesday, uh Tuesday the seventeen.
When's our next meeting?
The next one's the dance, my daughter's sixteenth birthday, that's a no-go for me, sorry.
I have a link for meeting that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a doodle would be good for people.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I think we really need to figure we're gonna have a meeting.
We're gonna have a meeting now, the thing is, answer the doodle poll so you get your.
Wanna aim for that week of the seventh?
That would for me.
Twenty first or whatever that is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, I will call the city council meeting for November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. What, you wanna get started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Husburg.
Zeke Royster.
Shane Thayer.
Travis McMaster.
Mike Fegard.
Everybody here, great, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, we find a date. All right, are we ready for? A vote, all those in favor, let me see your hands, it passes unanimously. Uh, now we're on. Comments from the public on items that were not coming before us today, yes, sir.
Yeah. Scott, Brad, Chad, two, three, third street. Mike, I'm here representing the auto league festival. And first of all, we really wanna thank the city for all the help we did this, this year has been a great year. It's been just a fantastic. Helpiness and. Promote this Bavarian village and promote the development that she's had. Putting on the auto league festival and the parade festival. I think it's one of the best ones I've ever been to and I've been to almost all of them. We have like seventy parade entries. Sixteen bands. One, two floats. Five horse entries, six year old teams and a number of various community uh representations. Yeah, our pumpkin pie meeting contest. Pumpkin rolling contest are really big, yes, the kids love it. Especially wanna thank those who participated in our festival, Mayor Floria. Houseman Water, Houseman Hesper, Houseman Christ, Frankie, very much believing their. Representing our community. Also, special thanks to Chantel. For her diligence and toughness in processing our inputs. Amy McCoy, all her help with South Street and Co's, a very special thank you to Sue Craven, she's not here, but. She has been a really fantastic resource. She reminded us of deadlines and she was so dedicated and coordinated all of our meetings. Um, she's a big part of this success ignition festival. Last year, last little big thank you to the public portion department, your your folks did a fantastic job, really fantastic job. They're always there, ready to help, gave us good suggestions and set it throughout perfectly. This year, we participated in nine festivals where we estimate over three hundred thousand people, we just in person. And maybe as mu- many as seventy million folks visited on T V. So you can see we had a big impact on promoting this town. Uh, in the process, we received several awards that we would like to share with the city center. First of all, at the Ylock Festival. We actually took third place in the two thousand to fifteen thousand population category and I think there were like thirty entries, so.
I'm curious, Scott, where have all these awards? Cause you guys get these every year. Is there a place where they're being held somewhere for the most part?
Yeah. That's one of our issues, we we tend to, they tend to uh accumulate in various places. And in the past, we've given some to our sponsorship, um but we. I would love to see the city, since you guys are our major sponsors, feature the beauty belong to the city. Any of you folks have been fantastic for us and this is something really the cities are in issue. And so, second of all, at the important um. Ghost Festival, we have a special award for our mini float. At the strawberry Festival in Marysville. And as you need to know, when we do the, they do the judging, they do the judging for these flows. And we're performing at the same time, we're doing the chicken dance, we're doing. We're dancing around the globe, doing all these things while they judge us, so. Of the nine festivals, we uh we did pretty well. Here's my favorite, that's the Queens Award from Lake Fair. The auto league festival is our oldest, most family-friendly festival. And it's been ongoing for over sixty years. But we need help. Members and volunteers who are looking to learn how to build a float. Drive and maintain the float and build a float trail to go out of town events. And also not afraid to wear a truck and then march along with the with parade and do the chicken dance. And bring up many, many of our, and Sharon could watch how much fun this is.
Blast, it's really fun, I'm just gonna quickly, Scott and Linda are the backbone of all of us. And we love you, Scott.
Thank you, um. Chairman, we'll uh agree with this, when you're walking down the playground, people are yelling out, we love that one. We we're gonna be there next week, we're going to October with us, they love us. And it's a lot of fun, very much watching the kids and excitement on their face when they see our float, so.
And as you drive along, people are jumping out of the crowd and doing the chicken dance as they go by, everybody knows how to do it.
So, uh, and and we'd like to take at least six walkers with us. To all these out of town festivals, a couple to hold the banner and base two on each side of the float to be escorts for the levelings. One of our long ongoing issues is uh. Full-time uh long-term solution for storage and a place to work on the floors, right now, we're we've been kinda. Using Osborne, but that's gonna go away and we need to find some, so if any, we're looking for help on that. And I'd also like to kind of see that our big float. Is getting pretty old, it's on, uh, I believe it's a nineteen eighty-two Dawson pickup chassis. And you can imagine what a Dodge and pickup chassis. It it is like after all of these years and the motor and everything, we have a lot of maintenance issues with that, so that's something. Driving operating a float can be a real challenge. Uh, we'd like to have some suggestions and maybe some help from you folks on how to go about funding. New float chassis and new float that we can build for the future. Uh, I hate to see us next year or some year near future. Uh, our float totally break down. Anyway, uh. I'd like to s- suggest that if you are interested or you know anybody that's interested, our application for uh membership is online. And uh feel and just come out, talk to us, we can help you and uh. We would love to get more people involved, frankly. I'm getting a little old. It's starting to get weary and I I would love to see the pass the torch on this. Younger enthusiastic people willing to really help out and uh. And supporting this uh festival and uh promoting our town. You know, thank you, questions?
Thank you. Any others? Items not on. The agenda, anybody online? All right, we'll move on then to our presentations, Randy is here.
Made it up, my T director went off the stripe and called her brother up for dinner.
About time he did that.
I owe you guys a couple months, um hours for September were nine hundred and seventy-three and then forty-four on the foot. And October with October festival did up twelve hundred and twenty-one and two hundred and sixty-six on foot. And then of course, uh. This month is gonna really bump it up when we get to that one. The pranksters have switched gears a little bit instead of bombs. This year, um, last month, they called in. Actually, it was this month, a couple weeks ago. Called in and pretended to be a security. And watching a. Inside a business that was actively being robbed.
Armed armed robber.
Pardon me?
Armed robber, right, they said it was an armed robber.
Yeah, correct. So the agencies responded to include state patrol, fish and wildlife for this, where's. Cording off the area. Check it. So they're switching gears a little bit. Hopefully, we can get through this month without any of that stuff during lighting festival. That would really be a pain. But it continues to be an issue. Chamber was great, I believe, but getting the cameras off right away when asked. There. There are several people that believe. This type of stuff is happening because of the cameras period being alive. It's the only city. In the counties and I'm including other counties that are having this type of call, Shalana, Wanhatchie, none of the others have it. I haven't asked anybody at the chamber yet. Several suggestions have been maybe doing a a flash like the state D O T cameras to take a shot every five minutes. Or something. I know it's a huge draw, I know. The national news loves to do it this month, especially with the lights. I don't think it'd be popular to turn them off, it's. It's what a lot of the folks at the sheriff's office believe is caused the issues when these calls.
So Randy, that's because. People perpetuate these kind of call-ins are watching the cameras just to see what, just enjoy the. Chaos they're creating because they can see it happen live, that would.
Yeah. I mean, there's several different reasons that they can see what the response will be from law enforcement, the other agencies. Um, and probably most of what you're saying, getting the joy out of. Watching the disruption there.
Are there other tourist towns, maybe somewhere other states that have twenty-four hour cameras that also are getting hit?
I have not, I have not looked into it and I have heard of it, I'm just going off of hearing Shalana and other counties. Uh, the only live, well, the only cameras are D O T and I think those just take flash shots.
They're not live cameras, interesting.
That's really all I have, we're geared up for the festival lights starting this weekend. I mean, we're two out of the five weekends. Three weekends off, I'm actually out of out of the area. So I won't be up for those, but but most of the staffing that I put out did get filled. Um, Washington State Patrol's helping us out, Wanhatchie and East Wanhatchie weren't able to help. They have, uh, Wanhatchie's. Down numerous positions that are already getting peppered with overtime. And then the uh. East Wanhatchie is what they were able to help achieve. It's a lot to ask and of course, all the city employees that are out there all those weekends, bumping it up from three to five. I just think was really necessary, this next weekend is probably one of the busiest. Along with that last weekend. Second weekend will tend to be the slowest. It's a lot to ask of all those people, of that. Eight law enforcement scheduled for Saturday, six on Sundays. Three, three bridges intersections, I should build every position except for one location one day. She'll copy it up, build a, buy a technical too.
Um, I was wondering, um. You're at the bottom of your page here, the worker release program for participants, I was kinda wondering what. What did, what did they do and what's alcohol monitoring participants?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, these are mostly jail questions, the work release is. Lower crimes if they have a job.
Yeah.
And you get sentenced to so many days, sorry, I've worked in the jail twenty-five years. Probably anywhere from ten to longer than that, if you have a job. They do let you out for work release, not where you sleep at the jail, you have to be in at a certain time. They watch your hours, they probably go do some checks where they check and make sure the person's where they're supposed to be.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Good to see you all.
Where are you going to dinner? Yeah.
Wherever she tell.
Right, Mike?
Good evening, everybody, uh, so for the fire district, uh, for us. We're kind of in full winter mode now, all of our apparatus have been prepared. Uh, that's mainly our U T Vs been put on tracks for driving on snow. Uh, and then we have a brush truck that gets converted to uh carry snowmobiles in a rescue toboggan. Uh, so all of that stuff is in service now, uh, the fire district along with. Uh, so all of that stuff is in service now. Uh, the fire district along with Cascade have been trying to help uh, spread the word about all of the uh, parking restrictions and the new emergency routes this year. Uh, and I wanted to say thank you to Kara with the city. Uh, she helped to put the map together and all that associated information that went out, uh. You know, no one was taking that on in a meeting and I said, oh, I'll do it. And uh, she volunteered to help me out and I'm glad that she did because I'm not an expert in cartography and she did an amazing job. Uh, that was, that was very helpful and um, I'm appreciative of that. Uh, for training, our recruit academy ended on the twenty-first. That'll add five new volunteers to our roster. Uh, in addition, the high school cadet classes, uh, structure portion ends in January. And uh, we'll begin the process to have uh, the eighteen-year-old students who want to uh, volunteer to onboard with the department. Uh, and last week, we also began our backcountry survival and rescue training. Uh, this is provided by the sheriff's office. Uh, and then in return, we go out and assist them with their uh, backcountry rescues as they need us. Uh, so far this year, we've responded to seven hundred and eleven calls, uh, which is up from six thirty-eight last year. Uh, it should be a record number of calls this year, uh, if we get just our normal call volume through uh, you know, the rest of November and December. Uh, so Wildland is officially over, so we're just sort of prepared. This is our structured fire and MVA season. Uh, had quite a few the other day with the first uh, bit of snow, so hopefully uh, this first weekend of Christmas lighting goes well. So, does anyone have any questions?
I was gonna say, Mike, do you have any information on that? Uh, the traffic, is that more of a sheriff's answer or fire as far as like we're not allowing left turns into um, into Leavenworth off the Chumst- off North Road um, on Saturday. So does that start, like, do you know anything about that process?
Yeah, so it's something we were just gonna try because uh, we're kind of running out of options on how to keep an avenue. Oh, its main purpose is to keep an avenue open for uh, ambulances uh, mainly. And uh, if we had a fire and needed uh, fire departments to respond, mutual aid, uh, to have an open road for them to get into town. Uh, and the hope is that less people won't take North Road. Uh, but that as they're made to turn right, that keeps flowing and so the road's always open. And we can get, you know, right there a quarter mile from uh, from downtown right there at North and Chumstick. Uh, but sounds like we're gonna kind of see how it goes and see if it works. Uh, and I go from there, but I think it's uh, I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I'm not sure if we're doing it the first Friday. Uh, if we're doing full traffic, then we are, but uh, uh, it will definitely be on the Saturdays unless we decide that it just doesn't work and uh, it's not worth the effort, then uh, we'll try something different.
Yeah, I just wonder when that's, when they would initiate that block, is it like from get go in the morning or like, you know?
It's starting at ten AM this Friday.
Okay, till eight PM, right?
And until second, start at PM. Uh, and then so it'll be this Friday to Saturday and and then as long as it works well, it'll be in place just on the ball and Saturday for the next uh, four weekends.
And starting at ten o'clock in the morning?
Yes, I have the schedule.
That's what I was wanting. See, wait, I know why you're doing it. I was just wondering when it's gonna be. Uh, those morning hours, I was just wondering when it started.
Yeah, ten AM.
Okay.
Does anybody know like the technical aspect of blocking that on Google Maps? Is that, will that be blocked off?
We discussed that in our meetings, um, and ultimately it sounds like it's hit or miss. There there's not an easy contact. It's what.
Right, whatever catches, it's easy, yeah.
Okay, plus you're having to sign down to the Chasten Bridge, right?
Right.
Yeah, there'll be a PCMS on uh, US two. And then once you turn into Chasten, there'll be a PCMS in Chasten also saying no level of access.
Will there be anything at the intersection between North Road and Chumstick?
No.
Okay, cause I've had several people reach out to me like they're uh, Sarah Perry's or she owns Cascade Wellness or you know, there's a business between the high school and North Road asking, I told her, reach out to the city about this, but she was asking, can she turn left to get to her, her job? Because she's not accessing Leavenworth, she's going before Leavenworth.
We're not, we're not like checking with people to see where they're going, but uh, they'll, they'll be uh, combed in place that are drafting people to make the right hand turn and a flight or their reinforcement to invite them to be allowed.
So it is getting manned, of course.
Um, not on Friday, but it will on Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it's not gonna be perfect.
Right.
We acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll let her, I'll let her know because she, I think she said that she reached out to the city and she hadn't heard anything back, so I'll let her, I'll let her know that.
Yeah, like Mike said, I mean, that's really what we're trying to do is explore if this is a way that we can get better EMS access.
Right, right. Which is essential.
Yeah.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, our next is a presentation by Gray and Osborne. We've got Adam and Keith here. Enlighten us.
Yeah.
So funny.
So I'm gonna do a, just a quick introduction, then turn it over to Keith for the majority of the presentation, but um, the city's been seeing a lot of growth and development in the last couple of years. So Keith and I both work uh, the city's water system plan. Um, that really looked at, you know, how that growth and developments and projections affected the water system, you know, moving forward, you know? Um, the city has plans, currently has plans to do a similar, you know, effort for the wa- the wastewater system, including a wastewater facility plan that looks at the, you know, capacity of the plant and a general sewer plan that hooks at the capacity of the city sewer collection system. Um, those are both in the works. Um, they're probably probably a multi-year effort, you know, very comprehensive. Um, this capacity analysis that we did is kind of uh, interim version that really focuses on the plant and um, was an attempt to uh, look at the plant capacity and see if there's any big picture issues before the city can do a more comprehensive uh, full planning uh, effort. So with that, I'm gonna let Keith get into the details, so. So hopefully not too many details, uh, because this is a, with a, a larger effort and it's really in specifics of some of the air working of the treatment plant. Uh, I will start by saying if anyone has any questions at any point, feel free to interrupt. Uh, this can be kind of a open discussion, but as Adam mentioned, um, we did a, a high level big picture analysis of the wastewater plant to kind of gauge where are we at, capacity, what room for growth, can we accommodate, et cetera? Um, and this is kind of gonna be a summary of, of our findings and kind of the results of that analysis. So real quick, this is what we're gonna do tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about background, go a little bit of summary. But we'll talk about transfer influence and effluent. Uh, we'll talk about treatment plant overview, overview. And then just a really quick summary of recommendations. So bringing everyone hopefully kind of up to speed in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The city completed the phosphorus expansion project, uh, that put in a new building, a lot of ancillary facility that are phosphorus polishing system. To help meet your low phosphorus limits in summertime at your discharge. So in twenty twenty-two, after that was mostly complete, questions kind of arose about, hey, well, what does this do for our capacity? Uh, we've got conditions for growth and new uh, complexes and such, and where are we at there? And it kind of just led to more questions and more questions, and that's where we got involved to try to help address some of those as best we can. In twenty twenty-three, uh, the city contracted the GNO to provide again a preliminary con- uh, capacity analysis. And the deliverables for that, deliverables for that were a draft report, but technical memo. And then in twenty twenty-four, we finished the report and we are presented. So a summary of the treatment plant, um, there's lots of interworking facets, but in general, uh, these large, these circle bullets here are the major process areas for the plant. It all contribute a vital portion to the overall treatment. So to start with, we have headworks where you flow measurement and screening occur. The oxidation ditch, which is where you get your biological treatment. Secondary clarification, so the treated water goes into that and it settles out the solids and clear water at the top in your discharge. Uh, UV disinfection, your effluent outfall. And this is kind of on the left, our liquid stream treatment systems. And then on the right is our solid stream. So at each of the processes, solids are removed and handled separately. And for that, we use sledge, you guys use sledge collection, sledge aeration and storage and de-watering procedure. Any questions about any of those? Well, we jump ahead. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more in specifics about each of those areas. So not gonna go through this uh, ad nauseam, but the point of this slide kind of to be to say wastewater treatment plant is complex. It's a complex process. And as you can see, you've got, you know, arrows going to multiple spots. Dashes, solids, liquids, it's, it's a complex process and it's all interwoven. So what you do to one pro- uh, one individual process affects another. So you have to kind of think of the big picture and the treatment as a whole. So uh, in general, uh, headworks up here, flow through the plant. Here's your ditch. Uh, here, sorry, your aerobic settling basins. Here's your ditch. Go through the ditch and a secondary clarification to a pumping station, up through UV disinfection and then out to the outfall. Get a better picture in the actual report. We can kind of, it's a bigger format. Uh, but again, very complex, lots of moving parts of equipment, all interwoven uh, and interacting together to provide the treatment that you guys will see in the plan. So jumping into the input trends now, so I'm gonna talk a few, real quickly about uh, some terms. Uh, this is flow. So this is the level of the amount of flows coming into the plant. Uh, you've got individual monthly data here from twenty nineteen up through twenty twenty-four. And then these two lines up here are particularly important. So the dotted line of, well, it's right here. The re- the solid line is the permit design criteria. That is what your wastewater plant is ready to treat. Above that, issues arise. Okay, so ecology has also uh, stipulated an eighty-five percent of design criteria threshold. That is the level at which you need to really start thinking about what you're going to do to provide additional treatment. So the theory being that as, as things increase, you'll cross the threshold, oh, it's time to plan. So that by the time you get to here, you've got the additional uh, treatment items that you have the need to provide and treat to stay hundreds. So big home messages, there's lots of innuendo that you can go into all these. I'm just gonna hit the high points. The main point for influence flow is that you have a large gap between what you're seeing now and the point at which you have to start planning. So there is sufficient capacity as of today. Uh, it's a very rough curtsy trend line. You can see we are increasing, but at a very steady, at a very low rate. Those are all good things. Questions about this?
If it wasn't low range, would the dots be further apart?
They would be not necessarily further apart horizontally. There would be a a more uh, striking increase this way. So you'd have point three MGD here and you'd be upwards of, you know, point six, point five MGD here. So you'd have more of this kind of online.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where are we be with three hundred and eighty-six additional apartments and about a hundred room hotel online? Where are we being?
There.
Thank you.
So VOD, VOD is biological oxygen demand. It's a measure of the strength of the wastewater, according in, in basic terms. And you can see, uh, you know, a much different graph. So um, a lot of factors affect VOD. One, just the general composition of the wastewater itself. The ratios of industrial, commercial and residential inputs. So are you ninety percent residential, ninety percent commercial, et cetera, really affects the strength of the wastewater. Timing and tourism. So that would be a tourism centric community. You see this very typically, you get a lot of variability in your VOD ingredient. So this data here for twenty twenty-one uh, is a little bit scattered. Not quite sure why that is. And then you can see here in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we hit more of a pattern. So we've got low in the early quarter one, increasing to a summertime peak and then decreasing again into fall and any kind of what we call the winter tourism spike. Uh, that kind of, uh, you know, showed through in twenty twenty-three as well, a little bit of oddities here. Uh, our general consensus was twenty twenty-one was COVID. So everything was kind of out of whack. People were staying home, traveling less, and then it kind of jumped up and it was very rare. So not a good year to kind of really carry through trends and analogs for trending. Uh, but twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four are more normal. Uh, yeah, for, for in uh, municipal across the state. So again, summertime peak, winter time spike. So with this graph, you can see you guys are more, are more close to this eighty-five percent threshold. The planning criteria for ecology is three consecutive months above the eighty-five percent threshold. One month spike, no problem, no additional planning is needed. They were, are trying to say, hey, this is a regular thing. Everybody gets a split. You can have a massive month, two festivals and, and you're over them. But they wanna see sustained input above the threshold criteria. So you're not there yet. Um, but if we conceivably see if this trend arises, and we'll kind of go this, if this kind of trend arises, you could potentially get a couple of peak months above that. Again, in the interim, right now, you have capacity available. Uh, we'll go into that, a little bit what that means in this part of our recommendations.
So those peaks happening the same place every year up there, is that?
If this is a little, we didn't get data beyond twenty nineteen, would have been great to go back even farther to see if we, if we carried through that triangle as that peak shape. But twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, you know, uh, besides these, this aberration right here are, are fairly consistent.
Yeah.
Sure quite how to explain that one.
Hmm.
Uh, but that happened. We did some of the same kind of thing here in this area, this guy as well as.
Um, just a quick question. Keith, don't breweries contribute probably the majority or a significant portion of VODs?
Oh, are, yes. Breweries are a heavy contributor for VOD.
Okay.
Um, there are methods to combat that, uh, kind of combat it and or ease its impact into the treatment plan. We can kind of talk about that toward the end too. Lots of factors, uh, just industry, restaurants in general are also victorious.
Right.
Going back to the very beginning of the slides, we talked about when we were finishing up the construction, that was twenty-one, twenty-two? Yeah. Is part of like twenty-two, I notice is the grade. Is that part of the testing phase too, or?
Um.
Were they doing extra stuff during development? They were diverting. There was just a whole lot of things happening to make the construction happen.
Right, right, right. So that, uh, that's a good question. Um, it shouldn't really impact strength of wastewater that we give the plant because that's generated in the system as a whole. And then hitting the measuring point is kind of the pipe at the inlet of the plant. Now, within the plant itself, definitely, and treatment efficiency. So that would more come through in your effluent. So what are you kicking out into the river? Absolutely would expect maybe not as high quality of effluent because things are kind of out of whack. And so really with wastewater treatment plant, it's a big bathtub of bacteria. And anytime you do anything to upset them, they don't like it very much. It takes you know, a day to upset them, but it usually takes about a week for them to kind of reassemble and find that happy. So absolutely would expect some effluent variability. Influent, maybe not. It's a good question. So VOD, uh, TSS, total suspended solid usually tracks pretty closely with VOD. So you would expect a lot of the same values, concentrations, ramp up and trending. And we do see that as well, probably more, more uh, consistently with TSS. So you get this summertime spike, with a winter time peak. Spike peak, spike peak again. Can't quite see that might look up like maybe November, October is kind of an aberration. Um, same general upward trend with a wide range of variability. So we're down here at five hundred pounds per day on the low end for a, for a year and upwards of eight hundred. So about a sixty percent increase across the year for a season for TSS. Uh, what we did find, I'll talk a little bit about it later, but the way TSS is centered, it's, it's a composite sample, so you're trying to take it at an average over a tight time. the way TSS is centered, it's a composite sample, so you kind of take it average over a tight time period. And when we looked at the daily data, we found several days of extreme TSS loading to a point. So you can imagine, if you're taking the average over thirty days, twenty-seven of the days are at two hundred, but you have three days at two thousand, really going to skew the average. So we saw that in your data as well.
What could be the source of that?
There's a lot of, a lot of potential sources if large loading from industries. So if everybody kind of does a cleaning effort on Monday morning after a busy weekend and flushes things, cleans things, dumps things, that could get to a spike, uh, could also get a spike on a weekend, Saturday night-ish, like everyone's going out to dinner, everyone's showering. Everyone's, a lot of command over system, uh, if it's a busy weekend, I could actually do it in a, in a mess. The measurements don't really take effective meeting. So you'd have that activity on a Saturday, you'd see that in your Sunday or Monday results, because it takes that long to kind of filter down to the point. So heavy news is generating kind of cause for that. This is a quick summary, I won't get into detail here about your effluent limit. So these are, these are what we are bound to provide by ecology for your MPDS permit. Uh, the key thing here, I think, is your average flow and influent loading limits. So point eight four MGD, just under fourteen hundred pounds per day for VOD and just over sixteen hundred pounds per day for TSS. Those correlate to the solid red lines on the front.
That's for what year, is that just, is that just?
For the, for the, for the permit cycle, which is usually ten years.
Okay.
You're due for a permit update, let's just leave it at that. Yeah, and that's not through any fault of your own. That's probably the case for thirty percent of the entities in Washington, there's just not enough staffing and ecology to review all the permits and review all the permit cycles. So they're issuing temporary kind of stays, like just do what you've been doing. Okay, uh, now I'll blast through this a little bit, just maybe more informational, to kind of highlight, uh, the, the take home is, is this number here we're going to get to. So we'll go through all of the treatment sections from a plant, just very briefly. I've got some photos of each, again, questions, don't hesitate. But for headworks, yes, this is where solids are removed, grit is removed, and, and nerds are removed, and then we measure the flow. Uh, you've got two screens, basically just all the water flows past it, all the stuff that you don't want to go on is caught and deposited elsewhere, disposedly. Key takeaway, so you have, this is a new screen, it's in great condition. Uh, you are well below your capacity for this particular treatment component at the point. So under peak loading, you still have seventy percent of this equipment's capacity remaining. So you're in good shape. The lower this number is, the better you are for this particular portion. For activated sludge, uh, this is your anaerobic tanks, your oxidation ditch and oxy tanks. Uh, you're at twenty-eight to forty percent capacity. Okay, that's a great number. A lot of these capacity values are theoretical values. The real kind of trick for your capacity is what are your, what are your settling rates? What's your effluent clarity? There's a lot of parameters that you can measure to determine your treatment efficiency. That's the real number that you're interested in. Straight capacity is good, if you don't have this, you're not going to get good treatment efficiency. So you're in great shape here. For clarification, so this is your secondary clarifiers, your WAZRAZ put in your coagulant edition. But this was amended or rehabilitated as far as a phosphorus project, so you're in great shape here. Nineteen to sixty percent, a sixty-seven percent capacity remaining, this is, the sixty-seven is a little bit, uh, misleading. At sixty-seven percent, we'd be one clarifier in operation. You guys typically run with two in parallel, so the number is closer to about twenty-two percent. Uh, it drops even further, if you have all three clarifiers in service, which you don't do on a normal basis, it's just not even.
But we haven't.
But you have, correct. Disinfection, uh, this was a brand new component put in as part of the phosphorus project, so these again are in fantastic condition. Uh, you guys use N vessel UV, which is a great, uh, technology, low footprint, high effectiveness. Um, and also this area includes your non-pot water distribution and your phosphorus polishing. So here's your UV vessels here, this is non-pot system, and here's the phosphorus filter, uh, which is surrounded by a large crap building that houses all the ancillary equipment for that. So again, in good shape with capacity thirty, fifty percent, uh, and then again, you know, non-pot UV and phosphorus, looking good there. For de-watering, uh, sludge centrifuge and conveyance, so all the waste solids get collected, decanted and then sent to the centrifuge, which is basically a spin, spinny thingy, removes all the water, all the soils go forward and then get dropped off site, deposited. Uh, you're at five to ten percent, so you're, you're well, well positioned there. This is the table from the, um, tech memo, it's a lot going on there, but I'll break it down as best I can. So this is each area of the plant with kind of the subsystems. So for headworks, per plate screen, grid cycle, et cetera. This is the liquids treatment capacity for each individual component. So for example, per, per plate screen has a capacity of two point nine MGD. Above that, increased efficiency, below that, true purchase fund. Your existing treatment plant sign flow is two point eight MGD, that's a peak power flow, so that's full on maxed out. Everybody's flushing the toilet at one time, what can we handle, what do we expect? And here's the residual capacity for that equipment. So as an example, two point eight minus two point eight is zero. When you experience this flow at a plant, you're maxed out and that component is maxed out in the past. So this is for theoretical permit design criteria. This value here is more in line with what you're seeing at the plant currently for a peak day flow. So more accurate representation of what you're seeing now. So you can see you still have a two point eight MGD capacity, but compared to your nap, your current peak day flow, point eight MGD, you can see you have about two MGD of capacity remaining in that, that is, that is particular piece of the quarter. And so on and so forth, I'm not going to go beyond the list here. But you can see, uh, in this scenario, lots of numbers in parentheses, which are negative, over capacity. And as we move to the, the current peak day flows, no numbers in parentheses, everything has sufficient capacity. Questions on that? So summary of findings, good stuff. Uh, phosphorus upgrades have been effective, but it takes a lot of operator focus to make sure the system is running at max efficiency. So coagulant has to be optimized on a regular basis. All the tanks with coagulant have to make sure they're, they're filled, and what do you do, what's the next delivery shipment date? Do we have enough to get us through that? What's our dosage rate, can be minimized, can be maximized, et cetera. Lots of operator input there is needed to keep it running at max efficiency. Flows are consistent and below the eighty-five percent threshold, those are a good thing. VOD TSS are highly, highly variable, but still below the eighty-five percent threshold, also good. Current and proposed growth is rapid. So the point there being, you're putting in interim, there's no reason that you don't, you shouldn't disallow additional units to be brought online. However, going to be cognizant of that, kind of take that and stop and always think about what impact will these proposals have on our treatment system and our treatment system? It's not kind of, it's kind of, you want to avoid the blank check signal. Hydraulic capacity exists with the current equipment for on the order of twenty years, given the kind of, the current rate and the black lines and the trends that we saw. And then additional sampling, sample education and training is desired. So always want to keep your staff up to date, you see what to look for, what to be cognizant of and how to optimize the system. So recommendations, I won't go through every line here, but just in general, so sampling. We recommended more data collection, uh, and, and making sure that all staff know exactly how to collect that data in the same fashion so that it's deep. And you see outliers in the monthly data, sometimes that's due to operator error. Someone takes the samples on Tuesday morning instead of Monday, or they don't do the full composite correctly, or they missed a sample, it just, it just happened. So making sure everyone's aware of the protocols and the procedures to get the consistent data collection. We also recommended, uh, additional weekend loading and flow monitoring. So obviously, being a tourist driven community, a lot happens on the weekend. We want to try to help you capture what's going on in the weekends and how that might impact what you could do at the plant to kind of flatten out that curve. To max treatment efficiency.
So what does that mean, additional weekend loading?
So, um, right now, VOD testing is usually done three days a week, not on the weekends, it's a five day test. So when you sample on Monday, you don't get results for until Saturday. So the way the sampling usually works, you sample Monday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We recommend, I think it was a sample on a Sunday, to try to capture that weekend loading. So that, that test then tells you, well, what are we seeing on the weekends for VOD versus a Tuesday?
So right now, we're missing that information.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, since our recommendations in G and O, we have started.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, doing that is atypical around the state, probably less than ten percent of treatment plants do it. But the tourist driven, yeah, it's a particularly.
We get the reason.
When did you make the recommendation and is the curve flattened since you've implemented it?
We haven't compared that data.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be enough data to make a conjecture.
I don't know when it's, when they, I, I don't, I imagine you guys did me yesterday. Okay, maybe his recommendations in July?
Or maybe it was before that.
So there's not enough time to.
It was input, might have been a little bit later.
We just haven't got back, yeah, we haven't, we haven't given them the data since.
Okay.
I think next spring, you probably have enough data to kind of see, see what, you know, try to make some differences about what's going on.
I guess it would be higher.
Yeah.
If it was, you'd, that's great, that'd be great data, great information. Uh, for commercial pre-treatment, so we, you guys do have a commercial pre-treatment program, so just making sure that everyone's following those regulations, requirements, making, making sure things are inspected, clean, maintained, which I know is difficult, given staffing and seasons and all that kind of stuff. But, um, that can often reveal some interesting findings, so it's a good place to look. Uh, theoretical analysis, so as Adam mentioned, this was a big picture, high level capacity analysis. A more formal thorough analysis is part of usually a comprehensive sewer plan, so wastewater facility plan. That goes into every aspect of the treatment facility in great, great detail. So getting down to, uh, peak loading, capture efficiencies, uh, lots of sampling and additional treatment effectiveness in the, in the oxidation ditch itself, that's all of which is well beyond the scope of this report. Uh, but having that analysis and kind of knowing that you need to do that more thorough analysis in the next couple of years is divine.
And we have that funded you, uh, for, you know, ecology. Our intention is to start that by, whatever it is.
Next year.
Next year.
That's the good one we got with one lead. What do they call it? Refundable one, so half.
Yeah, like fifty percent grant.
I don't know about that.
Best kind. And for treatment, just some additional monitoring, step blanket characteristics and optimizing your de-camp operations. So when you drain certain tanks, kind of finding that sweet spot between how far to drain and what time to do it. And so, uh, thanks for the opportunity to present, happy to take any questions or now or follow-ups with Andy or, or directly.
Any questions? I was going to ask Andy, you had a process like pre-treatment, like things called FOG? Is that fully operational now, are we doing that on a regular basis or are we?
We're not right now, we're down to two operators. Um, so with having just two operators right now, we don't have to actually do that until we bring on a third.
We got, we got somebody hired, hiring somebody or just don't have anybody yet?
We're advertising, um, so we've had some staffing changes and we are currently advertising for the supervisor. Our previous supervisor is now functioning as a lead operator. So we're advertising for the supervisor position for.
Okay.
That would be the third.
And if you haven't taken a tour of the treatment plant, it's very interesting.
Yeah, very well worth your time. So we're kind of heading into the Christmas season without this particular pre-treatment or this examination happening.
Yeah, it's more the FOG inspections themselves, you know.
Right. We're probably, they have the implements, they're using them, but we just don't.
Traps are in place, but if they're not inspected and maintained, you, you don't have the validation that they're being operated as, like, because that's their responsibility.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
It's actually not as bad of information as.
My favorite kind to deliver.
We're here for the rate study.
I know about that, I've done that too.
Moving on, uh, we've got another presentation. A public hearing this time on our final budget. And that's going to be done by Selby with the presentation and then we'll open up. Our public hearing will begin at eight oh six. Don't stand there.
Why are you expected to personally be during the budget presentation?
What?
Do you mind moving that microphone or lowering it?
It did happen.
Thank you.
You're really bugging Travis.
It's getting all of the cells and makes cell phial.
Andy. All right, council, following.
You can.
No, no.
Mayor, Steph, uh, this is very similar to the presentation that Shantel gave you, um, two weeks ago. Uh, we did change the colors so they're more readable, the slides aren't that bad, but the information is focused. For agents. So this is the overview of the proposed budget for the buy-in, proposed buy-in budget. Twenty-five with the various amendments that we, they, we ended up with a twenty-seven point two dollar budget. That's all funds and all capital expenditures, of which fifteen point two is operations and maintenance. So the rest is capital, that's all really capital. For twenty-five and twenty-six, that budget is going up, um, just under two million for operations and maintenance. And in twenty-six, it's still over four hundred thousand, four or less, um, in capital. We're, we programmed twenty million in capital for twenty-five, dropping down to eight point three million in capital for, uh, for twenty-six. Now, the way things generally run, we won't spend all of that money, not all of the project components, the wish, not all the projects will, will finalize. We won't spend all that money, we'll bolster that over maybe to twenty-six. Any questions about this slide? This is where our tax revenues come from, this is not news to anybody. Um, I'm going to start at the bottom, we have a point one percent public safety sales tax that generates about three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Real estate excise taxes based on transactions, so it's a tax just when they, when they report, um, and that is in purple there. Uh, we have the TDD, that's transportation benefit district retail sales tax, that's a point two percent, and that generates about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, property taxes generate about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, thank you for taking the one percent, I would even have to give it. Uh, this is not a tax, but this is just in here for information, this is our party revenue, so you can see in twenty twenty when, now, November twenty, twenty twenty was only turned on, I think it was, November twenty-one was only turned on, you're right. Now, October twenty, twenty twenty was when we turned on, I think it was October twenty-one was when it turned up, you're right. So you can see how that has decreased. Um and then thank goodness, because we are a small community and we're very fortunate. Uh this is how it bounce the books is with our retail sales tax. And to the extent practicable or legal with logging taxes as much as we can, so the operations. Any questions about this slide? Uh it's kind of hard to compare these. Um generally, Chantel would build the budget in Excel. Um this year she built it in bias by Springfield. That's by the tool package that we used. Uh and then imported into our uh cleared up software that we have. And so these are nice self-generated uh thrusters are generated by cleared up. So we have little, little, uh we have less control over how they appear. Um but in twenty-five, we have budgeted about just under twenty percent of the overall budget, um coming with tax revenue. Uh other financing sources at twenty-four percent, goods and services twenty percent, intergovernmental governmental revenues at thirteen percent. Um and over here, taxes at about thirty-eight and a half percent, goods and services just under twenty-eight percent. Um. It's the intergovernmental, uh intergovernmental revenues, three point eight percent. So that means that here we're relying on more grants. For this um year's budget and this budget, we expect those to be spent. Any questions about this slide?
Oh, no, nevermind. Go ahead.
How come your taxes are having a bigger share in twenty-six?
Again.
How come our income is, but it's bigger chunk owed to taxes in twenty-six than twenty-five?
Cause other sources shrink some.
That's right.
Oh. Okay.
It doesn't mean that our tax revenues are actually going down. It's just relying more on our tax revenues in here.
Okay. What are other financial sources?
There'll be a variety of things. Uh loans is one of them.
Okay. But not grants. Grants are considered.
Grants are governmental.
Okay. Okay.
Some funds have transfers from other funds.
So transfers, loans, those are considered other?
Those should be under.
Thank you.
And expenses, uh twenty-five, twenty-six, pipe line pipe, we expect to spend about thirty-nine point four percent of the twenty-five budget on capital. Um and that would go down to thirteen and a half percent. Uh as, as programmed today, but again, as we've learned over time, we program a bunch of capital, not all the project from the fruition. Uh so we can anticipate pulling some of that over. Um salaries and wages out of this particular pie is eleven percent. Uh for salaries and four percent for budget, or sorry, for benefits. We are not a full-service municipality. We do not own our police. We do not own our fire. So this blue bit here, the pass, the services of pass-through payments, that's largely uh our public safety costs. So if we were a full-service municipality, we'd be adding this thirty percent, eleven percent, four percent. That would be what our uh what our human resources costs are. Um. Any questions about this one?
Why are services and pass-through payments so much more in twenty-six again?
So, yeah.
Pass-through, uh it's again a portion of the pie. It's not actual dollars that we're talking about, it just takes.
Got you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just capital goes down, so that's more of the budget is spent off those.
Yeah.
So twenty-five, twenty-six general funds, this is just the general fund budget. Um spent just under eleven million dollars in twenty-four. Um that is actually going down to nine point eight in twenty-five, then eight point two in twenty-six. So that's just general fund.
Wha- what do you account for like the drop in general funding?
So I can tell you, like twenty-four and twenty-five, in twenty-four, we spent one point one million dollars on the Hugueney playground. Utilizing five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in Hugueney grant funds. So that was a huge portion of that first step down. With these sequential years, it's the same scenario is happening. Grants are going down, therefore projects are going down.
Okay.
Uh operations and maintenance, you had that on, on one of the very first slides, and we had a growth because we brought on more staff. At different level now.
Amy.
Uh again, how um general fund revenues, seventy-two percent comes from taxes. Intergovernmental revenues, that's better like grants, licenses, permits, charges for goods and services, ancient snow, earnings. Um so and our expenses in twenty-five, um services and pass-through payments at forty-eight percent. Salaries and wages thirty percent, benefits eleven percent, six percent capital. Uh and we don't have twenty-six because we don't, this is the one we don't have the twenty-six.
This is the one because it was throwing in the beginning to balance this, it's throwing off to the side.
So we don't have this for the twenty-six, but we'll, 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 we'll get into twenty-six.
Oh, can you go back to that slide? So that very top bar, that services and pass-through payments is a general fund. So that's mostly police and fire, all of your public safety contracts. But it's also all of your divisions, um free development, code enforcement. Take out their personnel costs. They still have a operational cost for their department. Those are all embedded in there as well.
We keep on mentioning public safety. They are one of our cost centers. Um we do have a contract with Chelan Sheriff's uh with Chelan Sheriff's Office that runs through um twenty-five. We will be negotiating with them in twenty-five, the next contract, like for a, that is a fixed four percent increase. We'll see where that flies. He just approved um consent, uh another one of these. In jail or prosecuted.
Prosecution and emergency.
And those were very moderate, it's not huge costs to us. Fire district is also a contract we'll be negotiating in twenty-five. That was a one percent annual. I expect them to ask for more next year. Uh and then we also spend money for both parking and for logging tax, civic security for parking, uh for patrols and enforcement. So about a million dollars is what we uh spend on public safety. That's more than we receive in, in property taxes and in one percent group sales tax.
Hmm for the parking.
Whoa.
Was parking enforcement new in progress in-house staff? What does that mean?
So we used to rely pretty much entirely on civic security. Um Shannon was our only parking uh person. Everything, all patrol was all parking enforcement, civic security. We have since added two parking enforcement officers, Stephanie Turner in general. And we've reduced how much we uh rely on Pacific. We will still always probably have uh Pacific um for events, festivals. But in our twenty-five budget, we are, we are posing two new parking enforcement officers to, to uh to be in-house.
Which makes us less we pay.
More we, more we pay for our parking staff in-house, the less we rely on outside.
Good.
So you guys have a uh financial policy uh with reserve goals in this column here. So this is our ending fund balance for twenty-four, um and the proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six. And then this is where we lie among your uh your reserve policy. So the general fund in twenty-five is, it does get below. But by the end of the biennium, uh it will move back to your reserve policy. Uh other ones that uh pool is uh below reserve. And we don't anticipate it will get to that fifty percent with the capital costs that we anticipate needing to keep that pool going. Um until an eventual redesign of some kind.
On the civic center.
So that's, so that was civic, so that was.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Pool's right below that though.
Pool, now. Oh, two point one, nineteen percent, sorry. Yeah, civic, the festival is getting back to fifty percent. We talked about festival rates.
Right.
Last meeting, the reason we were asking um local code to increase rates was to try to get us back to fifty percent reserve.
Right.
Um cool, we're supposed to be twenty-five percent, we're getting nineteen percent for twenty-five, given the capital outlay that we will have. We've got a new filter, we have to replace a new pump, we have to replace tiles, liners. Um plus we want to add some additional functionality, bumpings, chase structures, et cetera, to the pool. Uh water, we're getting to twenty-two percent, which is below your policy. Is why we really would like you to remove some increase in rates. So that we can get to our thirty-six percent, uh to get above our thirty-five percent. We, Chantel does project that we will get thirty, thirty-six percent. By the end of twenty-six, if you uh adopt so.
Right. Yeah, the rates have to go up for that, for that number.
Yeah. Any question about this slide?
Why are the, why are the water and sewer bond reserves in red when they're over the reserve goal?
Okay, I'll see if I can split it. We, Chantel split it to me, or maybe I'll just pump it over to Chantel. Our goal is four percent. We're currently at two hundred percent of that four percent goal, so we're at eight percent. This thirty-five percent at the end of twenty-six is, we are only thirty percent of the four percent.
So what's happening is in water, we're gonna take on new debt. But notice the budget, the amount sitting there, hundred and thirty-two thousand, isn't increasing with that new debt. Therefore, we are dropping below our four percent policy amount. And by the way, the four percent is four percent of the total principal debt of the utility. So it could be a combination of three, four, five, six, seven, eight different loans. But it's four percent of that total annual principal should be sitting in reserve at any given month. Which a hundred and thirty-two thousand for the water fund was fine. Even double in twenty-five. But when Andy really gets going and starts borrowing the money, we're gonna start dipping. So in the next biennium, we will look at increasing the amount that sits in the water bond, which is fun to keep it at the hundred percent of four percent. Same thing happening with sewer.
Any other questions about this slide? I don't want to belabor this point, because we're gonna have a special meeting just on top rates. But again, this, this, whoop, this budget does show the rates that have been recommended um by Kevin. At fifteen percent increases for water, ten percent increases in the event of for sewer and then I think. Three percent. I thought we were in three percent fewer and more increases for garbage.
And for me, from a budget perspective, these percents are just the total. You know, we bring in three point two million dollars. I need fifteen percent above that to make capital happen. That doesn't mean that it's fifteen percent on the resident or fifteen percent on this business owner. It's. Overall revenue.
Right.
That's what I need.
Right.
So like he was showing you today that on, on that residential home, yes, the water rate was going up twelve bucks, but the sewer rate was going down twelve bucks, right?
Yeah.
So then, for that particular home is close to zero.
Right.
But a commercial account was paid a whole lot more.
Yeah.
And also as Chantel build out this budget, she took the one percent plus construction, because we got to do the right thing by dating the one percent. Um she baked in a three percent increase in sales tax for twenty-five and a five percent uh in twenty-six. And this is partly based on bringing on three hundred and eighty-six new apartments in that Leavenworth house. And think about all the online shopping those people are gonna do. We get a dollar fifteen cents for every hundred dollars they sell online.
Right.
They don't have, we the city was generating costs. Locking tax, seven percent increase, because we're gonna be bringing on a new hotel, the Leavenworth house is gonna be another hundred rooms. So that's gonna generate a definite increase. Um and so she put in seven percent for twenty-five and eight percent for twenty-six, based on a new hotel. And general rate increases that would happen every year. Um put in, and this might be a little aggressive, but we put in for park revenues, ten percent uh increase. Over twenty-four to twenty-five, into the vacuum now glacier. We have the fluid annex slot, we have the door to bay slot, all generating revenue. With five percent in twenty-six.
So historically, like say when uh the Hampton went in, that did, did that. Increase the number of nightly stays in a hotel in Leavenworth, or did it spread out existing stays? Do you have that on that? I came up with that seven percent somehow, right?
Yeah, I don't know, but Chantel was here when the post came on, the answer came on, and another one came on all the same time. We went back and looked at the trajectory of the, of the hotel motel tax, you'll see a spike starting when they, those three hotels got off and safe. I'm sure it's helped out by the fact that the post is charging so much, so we're getting a, you know, pretty decent tax revenue off that hotel home. But do you?
Well, just in general, I mean, I've been here a long time and. When I first started working here, our busy was Friday night, Saturday, and people were gone midday Sunday. We're lucky to get Wednesday breather now, and that's it. We are jam packing this place most of the time, Thursday through Tuesday.
And the Chamber has done a really good job in the early stages um during the week, and stay longer. If I really can't speak to your weather, those officials are nicer, they'll generate additional tourists, or it's just that. Take those rooms somewhere else. My hope is that we get fewer, fewer airbnbs and more hotels.
I would say that it's not spreading it out, that we're just increasing our stays. Uh Chantel's really great about putting our uh financial information every month into our packet. It's in like tab twenty today. Um and you can see the spread over ten years for our hotel motel tax, which will show you that as we continue to build capacity. We continue to increase our hotel motel taxes usership. Particularly like December. In twenty fifteen, in December, we generated two hundred and three thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty-four, looking back at December, we generated six hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, in December of twenty-three, if it gets reported, then maybe four.
Any questions about this slide? Alright, so some significant things that are baked into this budget. Uh in the general fund. Uh we filed for a grant that we did not receive, and we were told by the grant authority to apply. We were urged to apply again for the, the Osborne project, but one of the things they said was, that we lacked in our application was. We didn't demonstrate that we had money set aside for the project. We didn't have a resolution from the council supporting the project. So those are two elements that we'll ask of you over the next year or so before we apply that grant again, which won't be until twenty-six. But we uh, I've asked Chantel, she has, she's rewarded that by twice, preserving a million dollars for that project for matching grants. Um and then we have some city hall of cemetery improvements, and we continue to put in two hundred thousand dollars a year for uh for housing support. So that's about three million dollars with the general fund. This is everything that we've built into the street fund at two point three million. Don't want to read it all to you. Um we are spending locking tax, and we're also preserving uh four million dollars for the downtown plaza improvements. We did have our kickoff meeting um yesterday and today with so much design firm that's getting us to the ten percent design for the plaza. Um in a year, and in a year from now, we'll, we'll know much more concretely what that downtown plaza will look like and how much it's gonna cost us. So at the moment, we've got formally reserved for that. The city pool, yeah, we're gonna do some repairs before we start thinking about replacement. Uh we definitely want people to uh to continue to go to this pool, while we'll think about what the next pool will look like and where it will be located. Uh so we've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand in twenty-five, and a hundred and thirty thousand in twenty-six. Uh to enhance the existence repair and enhance and maintain the existing pool. And then we got another million dollars in equipment, computer uh, uh equipment and pure replacements, including a garbage truck and some other properties.
Selby, on the um liner cracking, didn't they fix the liner before the pool? That's another reason we didn't open as soon. Didn't they fix that liner or put it in?
They did, but the fix didn't take. I mean, it lasted through the year, but it started, what they fixed started to fail during the swimming season.
And are they responsible for that or?
Um.
Did we do?
It wasn't warranted work.
Pardon me?
It wasn't warranted work.
Why?
At that time, I, we can't speak to that. Uh but I believe it was understood that if you issued an emergency, you didn't have to have a contract in place. We learned that's not the case. So there wasn't a contract that's executed at work that we could go back on our album to.
Is that the same company that put the original one in?
I believe it is.
And that didn't, that failed, so now they put this in it.
And, and I, I, not to defend them, but when we did research this issue uh a while back. What we found out was that there was a change order made after that contract was issued. And the change order was approved by, by the city administrator at that time. The product that was used was a non-warranted product. So that was a change that was authorized by the city, and that left us here.
And also this last one, that was also the same thing.
It was also, it was an emergency where she didn't have a contract because we were rushing to get it open.
Well, hopefully we're gonna stop doing that.
I know.
Yeah, we're we're looking at highly spent for this next season, so that we don't have that issue.
So we're looking at. For the pool, a hundred seventy five thousand for this year or the coming year.
This way.
And then a hundred thirty for the next year.
Yeah.
We're fine, hopefully fun stuff.
Yeah, the bulk of this is mechanical. The bulk of this is mechanical items. The filter tanks are are largest. Item that has to be replaced immediately. You can't run the pool directly.
Right.
And a pump too.
Yeah.
And Tom had warned us about that going into the beginning of this year's season, meaning that. I really hope that the pump and filter hold up.
Yeah.
And they did.
Yeah.
We made it.
And we applied for an RCO grant to replace them. We just weren't weren't successful in that. So luckily they will let me pass, so I have the money from the taxpayers who have the G R S A to afford the difference.
That's, oh, I didn't know I was gonna cover it. Okay.
So that's two grant things that got turned down, the O'Gran demolition and the.
We don't get every grant we ask for.
I think we should.
None of this speak to the library one in particular. This, the state legislature makes available ten billion dollars every biannual budget, so five million dollars a year for libraries. Five million dollars, that's all we budgeted for the two hundred and eighty municipalities in the state of Washington. It's five million dollars to help us build libraries that are extremely competitive brands. But they really like our project, really like our project. They just want us to do a little bit more work before they'll give us the money. They wanna be the last dollar day. They don't want to be the first brand, the 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 first bombing source.
So the, because we didn't get the grant, what's gonna happen or what's not gonna happen?
You're talking about the Osborne?
Yes.
It's gonna stay as is until we try again.
For another two years?
Yeah.
Well, we'll develop.
We, what will happen between now and then is I uh was successful in getting money from Commerce uh due to asbestos payment. So that that will move forward this spring. I'm still waiting for the contract from Commerce, but I was stolen back in August and we can't get it.
Let me write a little note on that thing the next time you do it.
And we have some seed money for the demolition portion too, but.
Yeah.
You can't just start demoing until you earn enough money.
Right.
You wanna make sure you have all the money to demo all the demo.
And also help, N C W library is still installing four hundred plus thousand dollars for this project. Uh, we're now holding a million. Uh, it will, it will eventually get there. We're gonna be asking our lobbyists to uh to ask our legislature to give us the direct.
I'm eighty, I wanna still be here, whatever.
Eighty one.
We'll we'll get it done as quickly as we can. Meanwhile, you stay healthy. Some other significant priorities that we're sitting here, this is from our enterprise funds, uh. The, from the garbage funds, we are seeking grant funding for bare proof or bare systems and gallon totes. For the water funds, there's a whole pack of a lot. We're talking twelve million dollars worth of projects.
Right.
Sewer, even though everything's going well with plants, we just heard we got capacity, which actually surprised me a little. Not told, because we 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 knew. But um, yeah, we've got to do main lines, we've got rehab, the K O A lift, we've got some, you know, various plants repairs and things that we have to do. So that's five million dollars we budgeted for sewer work. Stormwater, um, we cannot put in, we missed it, we talked about this uh Chantel, we missed it, is steel. Um, combined sewer project that we did get some money for. Uh, so that has not been baked into this particular budget, but we forgot about it, but uh we'll refer to the moment when that that pocket is full of the various money in there. Uh, so we got a hundred seventeen thousand dollars stormwater fund, and then we got a whopping four point three million dollars baked into the parking box. And we won't spend all of this in the next two years, I'll tell you that. Um, but the big thing is finishing the glacier project. Staff, capacity, weight signage, some uh weight weight finding signage. Some improvements, minor improvements to our Asgard political chop loss. Um, but we then we earmarked a big chunk for feasibility, design engineering uh of apartment structure.
Toby, whatever happened to uh what they were gonna put at the roundabout on the west end of town?
Well. That's a conversation for another day.
Okay.
I was reviewing my notebook today and I had a little note, discuss with council what they wanna do about the gateway. Um, I reviewed our our uh our agreement with Link. We're not bound by anything. We don't have to do anything in that roundabout.
Okay.
We had talked about using locking tax, I've built some kind of gateway. If you want my personal opinion, no, it's my professional opinion. Um, we do anything in that middle, that roundabout, we're just creating a distance. We're just creating another place that people want to take a selfie. We already have a gateway um on just west of that location, on on top of, on right outside our game. That I see people pulled over and taking selfies in front of all the time.
Same with the E can.
The only thing that I would recommend that we might wanna do on a seasonal basis with that, well, that is to put up a big tree. And light it. Maybe Christmas town. That's the only thing that I would personally recommend, um, but that's really up to council. And be discussed having some kind of design competition or whatever, but again, I, last thing I want to do is to put in a a traveling boost in there.
Did we put power in the roundabout or?
Fountain.
Uh, mission, so this is our mission, vision, values. Just wanted to let you know that. Everything that we do is with all this in mind as we develop the budget, we're making sure that we are representing our core values. Um, and. You guys have goals. Um, they have not been revisited since I've been here. I think I'm gonna ask you to revisit your goals in the spring at a spring retreat. Uh, but these are your current goals, they're in your packet, they're in this presentation, and everything in this uh project is in line with your goals, even though. Not while we were around when they were approved, but that's. That is all. Any questions?
Thanks, Toby.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Chantel.
Any comments or from the public? Thank you.
Anybody online?
You are gonna have an ordinance on December tenth, which passes the budget. And it's just these totals is what you're passing. And granted, we may change things.
You know, you'll get budget amendments.
Yeah, we do quarterly budget amendments.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll be fine, however you guys decide.
We will then move on. So close that public hearing so we can open the next, close it at eight thirty seven. Open the public hearing on the condemnation at two two five Prospect Plaza Street. Um, and that's opening at eight thirty seven, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, we just uh gotta get to. The write-up. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, city council is being asked to consider approving a condom, the condemnation of a portion of the property located at two twenty five Prospect Street. This is to acquire sanitary sewer easement to maintain, repair, and go replace the city's existing sewer line. And we already have an easement in the majority of the location through this property. Uh, there have been numerous attempts over the past two years to acquire uh. To acquire the additional area needed for the easement, which was was originally planned as part of our USDA RD funded wastewater improvement phase three project. Um, to date, an easement has not yet been granted to the city by the property owner. So condemnation of a portion of this property will allow us to access the existing sewer main in perpetuity. And easement, again, already exists for the majority of this line. This condemnation would apply to an area of less than five hundred square feet. Which is shown on tab, I think, eleven. This was great. So I pull your attention to tab eleven. Um, if you see the dotted lines, that's um running north to south, that is the location of the existing sewer easement. Where we do not have um sewer easement, and what we need to acquire is that little triangle at the bottom towards the alley. There must have been a boundary line adjustment or something done over over time, so we do not have control over that portion of the property.
I don't see him.
Isn't it the thirty five five seven point five foot area?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just the.
It's just that little.
Sliver with the.
Sliver.
Hash line on the right hand side.
Not the whole entire.
No, not the whole triangle, just that seven point five wide.
And what does that mean if it's condemned?
Condemned is basically a a a Washington word for eminent domain.
It just means that we are taking taking an easement that we have needed for a long time.
The city would then own that.
No, we would just have an easement on it.
Okay.
Access to it.
Yeah, so um, the person that lives there can't build a anything on top of it.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there anything on top of it right now?
Yes, not in that portion, but in the portions closer to the house, there are concrete pads, gazebos, hot tubs, all manner of things.
It would be illegally, correct?
Because you can't throw that over easement. Correct, they were done.
Well, not contiguous, but it's not well defined in the U S C P's like what their rights are. And that was hard with this applying to the entirety of that area, because we don't have clearly defined rates. Um, Tom, I put you on the spot, but I think the original easement was from like the nineteen thirties.
Yeah. Right.
Andy, was that a question? I didn't hear it.
It was kind of a question.
A wonderment.
I said, I I think the original easement was from like the nineteen thirties or forties.
Uh, the easement goes back to the nineteen forties. And uh the easement, existing easement runs due north to south. Uh, besides the trapezoidal piece in the bottom there that's seven and a half feet by approximately thirty five feet. The the other problem is when our predecessors built that sewer line post World War Two. Uh, they didn't build it down the center of that existing easement that ran north to south. It's Catawampus, and so we actually need some additional rights uh in the northwest corner. In the southeast corner, uh where the existing easement is. And we have rights that we can vacate on the corresponding opposite corners there. Uh, the um, the southwest corner and the northeast corner. But Selby's correct, the net amount of new property that we need. After we vacate some excess pieces that we we have is less than five hundred square feet. And most of it is that trapezoidal piece down in the south there that's seven and a half feet wide. Uh, by approximately thirty five feet long. And um, this is um a project that was intended to be accomplished in twenty twenty three. And we have been trying to acquire the rights from the property owner uh since, well, since twenty twenty two unsuccessfully. Uh, we've had demands uh for compensation as much as eight hundred thousand dollars. We've had lots of demands as to her existing encroachments and the existing easement. And we have been um quite workable, trying to resolve those issues with the property owner. We've seen, we've seemed to be on the the edge of getting issues resolved a number of times. Um, current offer for compensation is over thirty one thousand dollars. And we've conceded a number of surface rights in the area of the existing easement, and we just can't get there. And the only legal remedy that we have left is as um city manager Selby, excuse me, city administrator Selby. Uh, said, uh, we give notice of a public hearing, which we're holding right now. And then the action to be taken is to pass a condemnation ordinance, which is an ordinance saying we're going to acquire the rights that we need. To do this project, we're gonna pay just compensation for them. We pass that ordinance, we can continue to negotiate with the property owner. But if we can't make progress to achieve resolution here, then that ordinance gives us authority to file a lawsuit in Schland County Superior Court. And in court then to proceed uh to acquire the rights that are necessary. The final court paperwork would be a decree of appropriation, and we would pay money through the court. Uh, to the property owner as the court determines is the appropriate just compensation.
So that that dollar amount may go up or down from the thirty one thousand dollars that has been offered, the homeowner?
It it could, and there are, there are procedural steps in a condemnation proceeding that have to to be accomplished. One of them is thirty days before trial, which would be months in the future if we filed the lawsuit. You have to make your last best offer. And uh, there's a a ninety percent rule or a hundred and ten percent rule, depending upon your perspective. You have to get within ten percent of that last best offer or there are potential consequences. Where you'd have to pay the property owner their litigation expenses and attorneys face, but that's months in the future. Right now, the next step in order to proceed, since we've not been able to achieve resolution with the property owner. And since we've given notice, we're now holding our public hearing, is to pass the condemnation ordinance as proposed.
Any other questions?
Is is Benny Sabino online?
So looking at the site plan, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, the write-up says that the. Easement that we're trying to achieve is about five hundred square feet. Uh, thirty five times seven point five is only about two hundred and sixty two square feet. So where's the remainder of the easement located?
The other additional pieces that we need is if you look at that, you'll see sort of the dash lines that run due north and due south. And then you'll see some new darker lines that are a little bit tipped toward what I'd call the northwest. And so we need little triangular pieces up in the northwest and in the southeast also. So we would be acquiring some square footage there that increases that two hundred plus square feet. Closer to four to five hundred square feet. When all is said and done, we also have little pieces then on the southeast and on the, excuse me, the southwest and the northeast. That are excess and down the road, we would be vacating little triangular triangular pieces of property back to the property owner.
That happens down the road, or we can't do it all at the same time?
The condemnation action is um, is taking the property and when you have excess right away. You vacate it, so there's the statutory process for vacating it. I think you've been having some conversations about vacating right away, some other property down by the uh. Uh, on the river, so you understand what that process is, but yes, this, the these things will go hand in glove together. The net effect is we do need a little bit more property than just the the trapezoidal piece in the south. Because the sewer line is not centered in the historic easement that runs due due north and south.
So is our total, what what's our total width of the easement that we're trying to achieve?
Fifteen feet.
So there's a, the property next, are you looking at the bottom?
I'm just trying to see where where the additional square footage is. It's really not clear on the site.
Yeah, my question is, I don't really have a grasp.
Because I see two solid lines. I see one running through the existing house, and then I see one. Running to the west of the hash line or the dash line, but it looks so much wider than fifteen feet.
Can I share the screen?
Yeah.
You can point to it, sir, if I can see.
And then the, on the other side of this is the neighboring property. We've already acquired the seven and a half feet from them on that side, right? Like Thomas said, it's more that this is a skewed angle.
So we should take a property going up here?
No, it's within, this will be the final easement. We're just not showing. Oh, yeah.
Sir, if I can see.
That would be helpful.
So this little portion down here, the step of the little piece.
Right.
Is the new area that we need to clean. And then, you know. I don't believe that this is accurately shown, but it's not the spoken. So the new, the proposed is the dash line.
So what's the existing then? Is the existing shown right now, or is it just showing the proposed that we're trying to achieve?
I think it's just showing the proposed unless Tom.
I agree with you, Andy. I think it's just the proposed. Runs due north and south, and you'll see that that dashed line there runs a little bit at an angle. And so there's a sliver of property.
I'm sorry. I'm just used to, you know, using my computer.
Somebody get that away from him.
What's your password, Selby?
Actually going to pull up the G I S to pull up the existing sewer line.
Yeah, so isn't that existing sewer line that's going down the middle? Wasn't that at one edge of the?
Was it there over?
It's only there over at the bottom. You're, you're thinking of the entire.
Line, the line itself.
Yeah.
And then, and then that darker line over was the two, yeah, was the fifteen feet.
It's not because it was only seven and a half feet wide on either side before as well.
With public hearing, I'm trying to get, what are we condemning? Do we have a map? Can you show me what we're condemning here?
Yeah, that, that lower piece. Of that.
Okay.
That part. Where's the sliver?
That's it?
This is the sliver.
No, the other.
There's another piece.
There's another, to center the other.
So what is that other piece?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
It's not clearly shown off.
That's just.
But is it the whole length of the?
Like.
And what is that? That's, are we, that's something we're dedicating back to the person?
No, so we're trying to, so there's an existing fifteen foot wide easement that runs.
Where is it?
That run, it's not shown.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, there's a, I'm, what I'm trying to understand is there is an existing fifteen foot wide easement that runs a majority of the property except for that little trapezoidal piece at the bottom. And it is aligned due north and south. And what happened was that the sewer line was developed within that easement, but not down the center of it. And so now we're shifting the whole easement we already have, so that it is down the center of the easement, so. So we're, we're only achieving more of an easement in that trapezoidal area. But it also includes us moving the entire easement at an angle so that aligns the sewer line right down the middle. It would have been nice to see existing versus proposed on the site.
We do have the legal descriptions for both that it just doesn't give us a good visual.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the idea that we're shifting, that would have helped.
Yeah. But not, but not really because it's not really changing. We're just, we're just moving the location.
The only part that's added is the two hundred, that's the new.
Right.
But the rest of it is just.
Where the confusion was in the write-up where it was saying that we're getting five hundred square feet of a new easement and we're really not. We're only getting about two hundred and sixty square feet, but we're just shifting what we already have.
We're getting the rest of that, the three hundred feet, we're gonna also give back three hundred. Basically, by when we vacate the existing one. After we move it, then we'll vacate, so then you lose that three hundred that you're seeing.
Sure. Oh, I see, because we're gonna have two standing easements, so increase.
So then we're gonna increase one and get rid of some so that.
Got it. Okay.
The bottom line is, is just that one piece at the bottom that we end up actually acquiring due.
And the piece at the bottom is the one for all the money?
Yeah, that's the one, yeah. Okay. And all the things that are built on top of it.
But do they stay?
Oh, well, it's supposed to. Aren't you so, they're not supposed to.
Oh, so.
We're making differences for existing conditions.
We're, we're allowing things that we don't have to.
Okay.
So with the new easement language, when we're shifting the easement to align it over the, over this sewer line, are we going to build in additional development language for the protection of future development? But we're not going to require her to remove what already exists there, or how is that gonna work?
The way it's written right now is that the structures that are impeding the easement can remain until the end of their useful lives, but replacements cannot go in the same place.
So, once the hot tub is no longer serviceable, it would just have to be relocated if she wanted to put it in one of them. Okay.
Not that that requires a building permit or that we would ever know that she swapped out her hot tub.
True.
But we're trying to be.
Yeah. And I know that we've been, you know, working on this for a while with, with the property owner. I just, personally, I have concerns that she, she was in an accident at the end of October and she, she's not here to defend her property, but I don't know if that bears any weight with this conversation or not, but.
She's been emailing back and forth with us about multiple issues, not just this one. Um, she was told by our attorney when they delivered the most recent settlement package that this public hearing was happening at this date and time. We've given her a lot of opportunity to come to the table.
Been trying to work with her for two years.
And.
Yeah. Fair statement.
And we don't wanna condemn, we don't wanna file a lawsuit, we want to settle.
Right.
But we feel like we need this in our toolbox.
And, yeah.
So we don't necessarily, we have it, but we don't necessarily have to use it.
No, we don't. We're hoping we don't.
Okay.
It would be cheaper if we settled than if we filed a lawsuit.
Right.
For all parties.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. For sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody in public? Public hearing? Not seeing anybody.
No one on Zoom.
We will close this public hearing at eight fifty-five.
Mom need to say anything else? He's on there, he's.
Yeah, he's got a state of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
All right. We have closed that public hearing. We are ready to go on to our resolutions ordinance orders. And again, just a reminder, we will be respectful of each other, acknowledge it's okay to disagree. Prior to making comments, anybody who would like to, it has to be recognized by the chair. Address the council as a whole and not individuals. We need, we'll ask you to come up and state your name and address. And keep your comments focused on that specific topic. All right, we will go to action item twelve, which is in ordinance seventeen oh one. Condemnation of property at two two five Prospect Street.
So. Sure, um, I have nothing further to add beyond what was just discussed during the public hearing.
I would give a pain of motion to pass the ordinance.
Level with City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen oh one condemnation of property at two twenty-five Prospect Street.
Second.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by Anne. Any other comments? All those in favor, let me see your hand. And it passes unanimously?
Nope.
Oh, Sharon did.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay. I'm sorry. Any nays? No? Any absentions? Yes.
Yeah.
Mike.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, hello, thank you.
Uh, action thirteen, ordinance seventeen oh two, this is Megan.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this ordinance is a follow-up to our November twelfth hearing, uh, regarding restriction of pedaling, uh, in our city code. Um, currently the code, uh, allows pedaling in residential zones only. And as we discussed in the hearing, this has caused problems because we had issued permits for these residential zones and then they end up downtown and it's very hard to regulate. So, uh, adoption of these amendments would definitely reduce the number of complaints that we're receiving. Just simplify our enforcement process and they'll compute questions. And I do have Amy employed here, um, because she has been having to enforce these, um, issues, uh, subject questions, they're bigger stuff for her.
Questions?
Amy, how often have you had to enforce? How often have you had to enforce just this year?
This year, um, daily.
Daily?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we've got best signs to enforce recently. We had several businesses that had lights flashing. Um, I don't know, when people are back, they came and opened, took over the parking spots in, uh, right next to where, uh, what we're building is. Opened their trunk, pulled out a cardboard box and started selling those light up balloons without a permit, without, uh.
In a parking stall? In a parking stall?
Right out, um, the one that sweat and crush themselves?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Uh, they don't have business license, they don't have permits, and so that requires follow-up. If we can get their information, those violations, uh, enforcement that they try and follow rules, maybe we're lucky. We have, uh, court code enforcement issues with, uh, just, you name it. Dust blowing in the wind to, um, people being too loud.
Okay, as, as for this ordinance specifically.
Oh, for laughing?
Yeah.
No, yeah, no, just traveling maybe, I mean.
Pedaling law, for example, last year, like we haven't issued permits this year because we haven't. Uh, but last year when we ordered, when we did this, how, how frequently were you having to tell them?
Oh, huh, okay, so starting, starting the week of Thanksgiving and weekend before, day, the balloon people specifically telling some of them to leave. It would take me, um, I was working seven days a week. I would be calling the security company, actually would come by where I lived. Um, I live over Prospect, but I was living on Commercial, pick me up to take me downtown. Um, I would be telling the person in charge of the group, there's usually, uh, one group that comes and he has about four to five people that spread out. They come and they, they will come until we tell them to leave and then they will alternate, so we're chasing them. They'll move them back on the highway. Um, we could get them as far as the parking lot by the, is it the Methodist Church?
Right.
Over by the seventy-six station, um, soon as they see me with my jacket coming, it's very reflective, it's very bright. They all turn the lights off, they move out there and wait for me to go down to the other street to get those people off the street. Um, seventy-six station, um, has offered them a space to sell these balloons from. Um, the, and most last year actually had one of the vendors go there.
But these are all people, or all, these are all people who don't even have a permit?
They do not have a permit, they do not even have a business license.
Right, I was just trying to figure out how many, how many people or how many organizations are getting permits for the residential area and then moving into the commercial.
We only had two requests since I started. And one pulled back her request to do an ice cream bicycle carts. And the other was a college book funding where college students from the UK come to sell books door to door. Um, I sent them the information about our bears or wildlife, um, that we are a tourist town. We aren't, we door to door is not a feasible system it's when we've got some of the school vacation homes. Um, and they, they chose to go to Wenatchee instead, but then come and disallow.
But last year, we issued two or three of these pedal permits for the balloon people?
Uh, we just had one go out. We just had one go out and they chose not to use it because it was not profitable for them to be in a residential area. Um, they decided to leave. Um, unfortunately, they did make a, um, a copy with their phone and send it to other people who tried to use it to be on Front Street. None of the business, none of these business people tried to ever sell on residential areas.
Okay.
They were at Safeway last year.
Yeah, that's what we got. We were chasing as far as that, that part of town.
I don't, I don't know, it's, I don't like that, um, you're having to put so much effort into this. Um, and I don't, I don't, also don't know that it's within your purview to, to get a business license from them. A permit is one thing, but going beyond and saying, oh, they don't have business licenses, I'm not sure if that matters.
Well, any, anybody is proposed, any, anybody who wants to connect business in the city of Bedford must have a business license.
Does Plant Ally have, does she have this?
She didn't have one, she didn't have one.
My point, she has now, okay. I love Brittany. My point is, so, in, in the ice cream bicycle was my neighbor Beth, who was parking cars until we got the meters and then now she didn't have income from that. She doesn't have a lot of income. She's being creative. Then she applied and pulled it back and that was, that was a legitimate one to do to her ice cream tri- bicycle. Um, I guess I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I hate to see the, the entrepreneurial kinda stuff get shut down. I understand all that. I like to see the kids sharing, right? I like to see the kids with the light up balloons. You go to the Disney on Ice, you get the Nemo sword. It means always a sword, like it's a princess sword.
Follow the rules.
So I might.
All the rules, but we're shutting it down where they can't do that.
We have three businesses selling those balloons this year. Last year we had one, but because they're out in, in, on Front Street and pushing the balloons here, take it, they sell those balloons up to fifty dollars. Uh, third week of Christmas, fifty to a hundred dollars a piece and people are buying them.
Yeah.
So we've got three businesses selling them at ten dollars to twenty dollars.
But they started doing that recently?
Just, yeah.
So they saw this entrepreneurial person selling them and, and then now these businesses are doing it, that's why. What I'm saying is, well, in the rules, I'm saying this entrepreneurial thing and good for, I mean, I've just, eh, starting somewhere and then these businesses have said, oh, those are great balloons, people are buying them, we're gonna also do that and we're a legitimate business. It just, I've just, when we shut it down to zero, I, I just had concerns about shutting this, this license completely down to zero.
This, this ordinance does not allow you, peddler's permit does not allow you to sell on Front Street. So we're not, we're not suggesting that we're gonna change your ability to sell on Front Street, it doesn't exist. It exists only if you get a business license and you follow the code and, and open a business on Front Street. So we're, we're basically trying to take a loophole out that's currently not even being utilized. Nobody's selling encyclopedias anymore, nobody's going door to door.
But you're not a business when you do a remote, when you bring the donuts in, those are kind of seasonal kind of businesses.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't get a peddler's permit for downtown, so what you guys are proposing is. They started, they started, um, baking their bagels in cashmere. I think they still bake their bagels in cashmere. But they got a booth at the farmer's market. They were so successful in selling out the farmer's market. They were also doing online orders and you could pick them up at their other business because they have a Ferguson order, the Duff Sweet Shop. Um, so you can buy it through them. I did that in order, picked up at Duff Sweet Shop. I also came down to the farmer's market and got myself bagels. Yes, they were with the night card limit for the day. But they have now taken over a storefront on, on, um, Ninth Street. So that's, I'm, I'm just saying this to, cause I heard that there's concern about not allowing entrepreneurship because we're restricting peddler licenses, saying there's still an avenue for entrepreneurs to pass their market. Um, and that's.
To be successful, yeah.
Right.
Another thing is, it's, it is hard to get in, your foot in the door in the commercial business. But once you do, to have it being undermined, when you've taken on the debt and it risks to develop your business and then somebody comes along and just throws a blanket out, starts just crushing it. Nobody comes and spends money in your store now, that's not okay either, right?
It's free enterprise, it's, uh, there's a couple different ways to look at that. I understand the cost of adding a business, but.
I don't know why we should have to protect somebody who's exploiting.
The, exploited in that way that Amy's described it, that's, I don't, I don't, I don't get that. So, I guess I'd, I'd ask you, Amy, if we pass this, then what's the resolution next time, do we, do you dial up the sheriff, do you dial up civic security?
So actually goes to the sheriff, uh, next year we'll be able to issue tickets and so it'll be two hundred and fifty dollars per ticket.
Hmm.
Per person, for instance. Um, if I can get the information from the business license and, and I've, I've spoken with many last year and I asked to see, when do you see your business license? And they won't let me see it, they will, they'll flash it on their phone, they, they don't want me to see who they work for, where they're coming from, they don't want me to know their names. If I had the information, I could actually issue those in violation for not. Having a business license in order to move to the city. Um. That would resolve the fines, so on and so forth. Um, it's a network of people that they, at the beginning of the, the fair winter, they gather together, they map out. How they're gonna divide who comes when, um, it's multiple groups of people that come. And so we're talking about, you know, five or six a night. Um, they have wagons, uh, wagons of these items, they sell anywhere from twenty to fifty. Um, dollars per balloon that people are encountering that. There's fifty dollars right there.
That's, that's.
Those are our cities.
Right.
And they don't pay sales tax, we don't, we don't.
Right. Okay, let's, I saw Ron standing up. When we get a motion, let's get a motion. On the.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance one seven zero two restricting peddler permits inside city limits.
Second.
By Dan, seconded by Sharon. Then Ron, you had comments, anybody from the public would like to comment, no, thank you for asking.
I just called you by name.
Two things. The, the first one is, is that this ordinance, uh, basically cut and paste the RCW language for what a peddler is. And cut and paste the required RCW exception. Verbally, this city in this previous discussions discussed, oh yeah, this doesn't apply to. The kids, this, the elementary kids selling seeds or scouts, and it absolutely does, because it absolutely fits the definition of peddling. So I'm not sure why, if we can put the RCW mandated exception in, we can't put an, an exception in. For the students doing that. And I, and you mentioned the UK, uh. Students selling books, when I lived in Bocco, we had Israeli students selling paintings that they painted door to door. To pay for their, uh, schooling. And, and that's. Those, and you bought one, and it's in my, it's in my living room here now in Leavenworth, and, and it's. Those opportunities I think would be illegal by this. And, and, and eliminating that in the residential area does not fix the problem in the commercial area. So having the fine in the commercial area would resolve it, because if, because if there's no peddling in the commercial district. That's a separate thing than, than doing these fundraising things in the, uh, residential areas. And I don't, and just closing the door in the residential area. Is disappointing, because I really liked those, this is Leavenworth, and when these little elementary school girls come. To the door and are selling seeds that their mom's gonna deliver later, that's the town I wanna live in. And I don't want that to go away, and I don't want it to go away because, well, we're gonna enforce it on people we don't like, and we're gonna. Not enforce it on people that we think are okay today, but maybe it'll change and we're just deciding, the law should be the law. And if, and if there's an exception, it should be written so that that exception is in there. And that's all I, that's what I wanted to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I, I do question, so. With, with what Amy's telling us. Uh, existing code has not posed any problems except for that one permit. Was maybe sort of issued and then. Taken a picture of and shared and that's been abused, but really the people that are selling downtown are violating. Policy or the law as it is, so getting rid of the peddler permit doesn't change any of that. I don't know that it makes you ease enforcement easier or not, I'm just wondering why are we going through this, if it doesn't seem to substantially change any. Of the issues.
It is an enforcement issue, um.
Does this make enforcement any easier, because this is really just restricting it in the residential districts, because we've never allowed it downtown anyways.
Right.
And downtown is the issue, so does this change anything for enforcement?
I think it's just limiting the ability to issue these and have people carry them around, well, we don't have enforcement down there, they're just showing that they do have a permit. Um, but. And, and we just got a lot of complaints last year, that's all.
I know when we talked to the, to the sheriff, and it would have been nice to have him here, but, um. Through this. But the, it, it makes them able to enforce, they're not gonna, they're not gonna check business licenses. But if they know, you can't peddle.
But if they're, but, but we don't allow peddling downtown anyways, so if they're peddling downtown, they're already violating the code.
No, but they're, they, they just have to be peddling anyway, that's the thing, they, they can run away, and that's what the, like Amy was saying. They'll, they'll run from you if they know you're around. But if they can't even have those. They can't just go escape into the residential for a short time till you walk away and then come back. You can go up to them in the residential and say, peddling's not allowed, there's a difference.
If we don't issue any. Permits, like right now, there's none issued. Can we just tell the sheriff, by the way, there's no, there's no permits valid out there, so just don't even, don't even worry about it, they show you a permit, it's not valid, we have none issued.
But we still, under the current code, we could issue.
Right.
But, but I mean, we could just let the sheriff know that there's no issue. That way, it's just, if they can run wherever they want and they can show you whatever they want, but if we could. Just tell the sheriff that there's no permission, there are no valid permits issued. So we, we can leave this just exactly.
What about next year? But this is the way that it is, you can't even do that.
We've said like because of this, that we had two people come into Sullivan's downtown.
Yeah, but the point is, like, with the enforcement, with a limited amount of officers.
People keep.
Doing all, so many other things, are they gonna cheat, whether we do this or whether we pass this or not, are they gonna enforce, it's, it's always enforcement, right?
Right.
Parking, everything's enforcement, manpower, you've spent so much time. To your point, eh. Eh, whether you tell them now, go get them, if they're selling balloons, they're selling them illegally, are they gonna do it now, are they gonna do it next year, whether they have a permit or not? They're gonna run from the police, they're gonna show the, if they don't have a business license, it's not gonna affect a business. Personally, they'll have, get a ticket and maybe they'll, we, we'll, they won't pay that, they're already breaking the law anyways, what's the, I guess, what's the point of passing this?
Yeah, what, what will enforcement look like?
I mean, I.
Sorry.
No, what?
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, because. This feels like. The balloon peddlers are trying to play a game of plausible deniability, what I'm hearing you say. Is that if they're able to get these permits for residential zones, they see the residential zones as a quote unquote safe zone, where if people, if. They sense that people are on to them in the commercial district, they will literally run to the residential district, because then they can say, what do you mean, I was just traveling there to. Pedal here on Center Street, and that's their excuse. Even though we know they're lying and they know, we know they're lying, but they're on Center Street, so we can't do anything. If we, if we deny them the opportunity to get this permit. It allows enforcement to essentially call their bluff, even if they're on Center Street. Does, is, am I?
Yeah.
Am I on track, okay?
But they're already not getting a permit, so it doesn't matter if they're running in the center street or not, with, right now they don't have a permit.
But if we don't pass this, we have no basis to deny them a permit.
Yes, they can come up and ask for a permit, because you can get a permit to do it. In the residential.
But they're not. So what does it matter?
They're gonna come and tell you, they're not gonna come and tell you, yeah, and I promise I'll only do it in the residential, they'll say, I need my permit for the residential.
But Amy said that they don't even have a permit.
We don't, but that's the point, with this, we don't give permits, they don't have them now, they're asking for them. We said, we're, we're gonna not allow them. We basically gave them, they've come and asked for it.
So you, so you've denied permits this year to peddlers?
I have, they've come into.
All these ordinance is.
Said, we're waiting for this ordinance.
So you, oh, so you've denied requests for a peddler's permit. Already this year?
I gave her permission to let them know that we hope that this would pass.
If I didn't issue any formal.
They could come tomorrow and go, did it pass or did they give us?
How prolonged a process did they get?
So what are the main, I'm wondering what's the task?
I, I don't mean it, or no challenges you get, but I, I, I feel like we've got, the, if they have a permit and says they can sell residential, they come downtown, they're violating the permit. Then go to enforce it, they run to the residential zone, we got cameras everywhere, they, they can, even if they don't get anything at all, we, we say we kill the peddling permit. They come downtown, they sell anyway, which they're going to, we all know this, right?
Right.
And then they run away and then they just say, I wouldn't sell anything, I just love balloons, I have a whole cart full. Right, and, and so it comes back down to proving that they violated the law, whether it's this law or the fact that they didn't get any permit. It's, it's just pain in the ass, is what it is, and I don't think that this is gonna change that. I mean, really, enforcement of it is not gonna get easier.
No.
By getting the peddler permit and it might cause issues with, somebody could say, you know, why don't you apply. The permit law to these kids, you know, or anything else that comes along that's, that's valid, like a ice cream cart, you know?
Yep, I, I think Ron had some good points.
Yeah.
I, I think that this doesn't, this, it needs to be black and white one way or the other, I don't think we can just say, hey, we're gonna turn a blind eye to. The middle schooler that's gonna sell seeds, but we're not gonna turn a blind eye to the eighteen-year-old that's gonna peddle something somewhere.
Right.
Um, so I'm. I'm struggling with this one, I think it all comes down to enforcement. To be honest, I don't think.
I'm a scaredy cat, big time, and. I watch TV a lot and I watch the news. And I don't want a stranger peddler coming to my door, period.
Even if it's a little kid?
Hmm, oh, they're little kids, of course, I'm talking about, these guys that are doing the, the balloon stuff. I do not want them to come to my house and knock on my door, I don't want it. I'm a scaredy cat. It's serious, if they get mad and I go, what, go out and they shoot me, I don't. Don't want it.
Well, if, if it's a door-to-door salesperson that gets a permit, at least we know who shot you. They have their, their license.
And my family will take care of them. No, I am, I'm a scaredy cat, and I don't want that, I don't, I don't want that coming into our community.
And there's, and here's the thing is, that you talk about, you're right, it is all about enforcement. And the thing of it is, a bigger deal is, if you've got somebody in a uniform enforcing versus somebody in a vest enforcing. It has. It, it makes a difference.
Yeah, but, but the time, yeah, I'm just, by the time. They're not roaming our streets all the time, and I don't, I don't think that this ordinance necessarily changes whether or not the sheriff is, can help us more or not.
Right, I mean, by the time you make the call to the sheriff, they're gonna leave.
What about our security people?
They can't arrest.
Yeah, they can't arrest or detain anyone.
I'm scared.
The sheriff's.
Yeah, scare them to leave.
We've got a lot of parking tickets and enforcement, we're doing already this year, right? Because we know, like, commercial street, there's no parking, we potentially go towing cars, I feel like. The sheriffs are busy, I think, this year. And not that that's a good reason at all for this, but the enforcement comes down to enforcement, I mean. It sounds to me like what we're dealing with here is. A coordinated, multi-pronged sales effort that's very cognizant of our.
Right.
Inability to enforce, so. Passing this, even if we do pass this, it sounds like it's not gonna do a whole heck of a lot of good.
Right.
What we need to do is invest in additional resources to ensure that when they're running this way, someone's coming this way, or else it's kind of a moot point.
Right.
Are you able to, and this is something I never talked to Maggie, but are we able to implement that? Can they, can we say there's no peddling permits from October to March? Which is when they come? And is that something that's possible? You don't want little kids going through the ice and snow, going door to door, and not selling cookies or popcorn this summer here?
Sometimes they sell Christmas wreaths.
Yeah.
But that's the point, Amy, that you could.
If we can, you know.
Or add something if it's some, if it's a person selling that. Something online, that if, if it, if they require business license.
Yeah.
Because kids going door to door.
Right, yeah, right, exactly.
So what I'm hearing you say is that if this passed. You would have a sense that perhaps it would be deterrent to these folks, because there wouldn't be the implied safety blanket of a safe zone. That's the thought process.
Well, and the sheriff, when we met with the sheriff, they said it would be easier for them to know who was allowed to be down there and who wasn't, because if we just didn't allow it at all, they'd be, they'd know.
But how often do they?
We already don't allow it downtown, so I don't understand.
I'm like, they don't know if somebody is involved with the event or, and people will lie and show them they have something with the city on it, and so they just, they don't know our process and. They just, I'm, I'm just speaking from, from what the sheriff said.
Conversations.
Um, but I. I agree that it probably needs some work.
Yeah.
Uh, but I. In hindsight, I really wish I could get this feedback after a hearing and not at this point.
Right.
It's really frustrating from the staff perspective to spend time on this, when I don't get this from, ah, after a hearing.
I was.
Or during a hearing, yeah.
My, my apologies. I do, I do like the idea of an exception, when we're talking about Christmas wreaths, those sales come in October. So what if we had an exception from November to February?
Or no exception.
Or rather, it, yeah, it's in place from November to February.
The other thing is that it requires a business license, it would require a business license.
Well, could we restrict peddling to only fundraising events done by kids?
Fundraising by nonprofits or school districts?
Sure, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Cause nonprofits or schools, they're manned.
I'm with Sharon, I don't want anybody knocking on my door.
Mm-hmm. Do the balloon, balloon people knock on doors or did they just shut up in the middle?
Walk, they're not supposed to set up and just stand on the street.
Right.
So technically, they should be going door to door.
Technically.
But not, yeah, in the residential area.
And the fact is that, the fact that they are asking for them. And wondering what's gonna happen here. Oh, they're asking for.
They want, they want, they want, they want a permit. That they're gonna violate, that they're knowingly going to violate.
So you're right, it is an enforcement, but here's the thing, if you got enforcement and then. Eventually, we can do it with teeth. That they get. You know, fined for it. Then, then again, the key is enforcement and you enforce it. A little bit upfront. And guess what, pretty soon. It's not worth it. If they're gonna pay two hundred and fifty or five hundred per incident.
Per person.
Per person.
They're selling fifty-dollar balloons, do you think a two hundred and fifty-dollar fine is gonna deter?
Per incident, every time you see them.
Per person, per person, per incident, that's gonna make it pretty hard. Especially it's in the, it's in the, it's got a two fifty, doesn't, doesn't make you go up to a thousand.
So what's the biggest fine you've seen, per incident, per?
We can't, right now, we can't, I can't ticket someone and if they don't have a permit, I don't know who, I can't go write a notice of violation.
And these type of language of per incident, per time, I mean, are these, are these real or these are just scary things, do people?
No, it, this is, it's in the, in the proposed code, right now it's two hundred and fifty.
What I'm saying is, if there's other, if you've seen, have you seen other things that are per incident, you've seen this language before in different fines, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they have the signs, uh, lights. That are not in the, the very.
Okay, so, have you fined those people? Have you, have those people been passed fines for violations?
Yes, there's, I've issued three this year.
But, now, what, when they rack up, I mean, are they sometimes, okay, you have two signs, so that's, you, you really, they really rack up?
Yeah, yeah, you got two hundred and fifty dollar per sign, for instance, I saw you all four days of holiday weekend. That's two fifty, times four, times four, times four, or a couple thousand for just one of your businesses at the edge of town, having a spray paint sign that's totally not code.
And they, they pay the fine, two thousand bucks.
They pay the fine, they can find you very quickly.
Here's what happened, but that's easier to do because it's based on a specific property, we know who the property owner is, we know who the violator is, if someone's downtown and we don't know who they are, we can't. Issue, we don't have a method to do that, we rely on the sheriff. And then there's, so anyways, it's kind of a whole.
No, this is.
So now the sheriff's office would have to get a citation book and be able to issue the citation, down there would not be city staff.
So question. If we wanted to restate an ordinance restricting peddle permits inside. City limits with exceptions to fundraisers held by nonprofits or school districts. At Campy Ordinance seventeen oh two anymore, what's the process? Do we need to wait two weeks to bring this back to the council? Or can we pivot tonight?
I haven't had to do this before.
I think you're gonna amend it, can we just make a motion?
Yeah, we won't take action on this tonight, I have to redraft the code based on what you want me to do and bring it back with another ordinance.
Well, no, you, you can still have this ordinance number, they can table it tonight.
Okay.
You can make changes and bring it back to a future.
Then you add another exception or.
Add amended by Maggie.
Christmas tree lots.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
No, I'm just gonna rescind my motion.
Asking question then if we're, if you, if you're going through that process. If the Boy Scout wants to sell popcorn, Girl Scout wants to sell cookies, door to door chocolates for baseball. They get a perm, if that pack gets a permit from you, that den?
We would exempt.
Was asked proposed in the, in the. Yeah, so they don't need, so they're exempt, so they just can just. They just show up, like normal, yeah, I feel like I never get a permit, not sound pump.
I don't want kids coming to my door.
This guy. Okay, so that's cool, so I like, so they don't have to deal with all the process.
The kids aren't a nuisance.
Is that okay? Is that discriminatory in businesses versus if somebody has a real business license and they wanted to do a pet, wanted to sell something?
There's actually already exemptions in our code for business licensing for nonprofits.
Yeah.
And then children who make X amount of dollars on their certain amount for whatever it is that. That lean, if you will.
Okay.
They're also exempt.
Okay.
So there's already state exemptions in place.
Yeah, thank you.
But she'll need to go look at those based on what she's heard tonight and maybe work this language. That sounds like you guys want.
Yeah, cause you know, my concern is that. That what Maggie needs here gets done. So that this, so Amy's not chasing these guys.
For the next two weeks.
Bring this to a little. Have some impact and give it a try. Uh, we can't just ignore this, so.
Sounds like, to me, I still think you could pass this as is.
And then we can bring back another amendment.
We would just bring back something that would, because they're already, it's already. Foundational, so to speak, that kids can do those things without permits and without business licenses. So that's.
Why can't we pass this and have it as amended by Maggie or whatever?
Just really.
We need the proper language and we need the proper code regulations. So what's in front of us, we either have to approve or not approve.
You could approve what's in front of you tonight, which would eliminate pedaling. For now.
Okay.
And then we could bring back another amendment to the same code in the new year. That would add back the provision for fundraising for nonprofits or whatever it is you want. But if we approve this tonight, then we could make it clear. To all the people that wanna come downtown and sell balloons, that it is no longer welcome in the city of Lubbock anywhere.
And the city can enforce that.
And where you could.
I'm open to that.
Because it's happening, like I said, this is, we're in the.
I don't wanna bulldoze, and I wanna address Maggie, I I appreciate, I think we all appreciate the time that it takes. We've seen housing commitment, we've we've seen this before and it goes back and. Like, why didn't the council, it seemed like everybody was green light, but I think this is a great example of. Like, somebody from the community bringing something that really prompted this really big dialogue, and I think it's working, it's. I think we're working towards a really good path, I'm coming around. So I know it took time and I know everybody wants this permit to shut it down, but I think this is a good example of the process. I don't, I may, you may not agree.
I I hope, I hope that it works. I I honestly, I just think that we should spend a lot of time on something that it's not gonna make enforcement any easier. It's not gonna deter them from self-selling and and I, that's just, I think we, I think we spent a lot of time on something, we're not gonna get anything done, but, but we're, we're giving it a shot. So I'll see if we can make some change that helps you guys, you know, do your jobs.
I think that as soon as we're able to have those citation books and enable the police officers, they do respect that bad, not until the white patches. And they do, you're not just saving those citations onsite as they're occurring, it will make huge impact.
I think so too. I'll, I'll be right. Chance.
Any other questions, comments? Ready for a vote?
Uh, did Anna officially rescind the motion? Do we need to remake the, restate the motion?
Well, didn't, she didn't rescind, we didn't get a second to rescind.
I didn't get a second.
Okay.
So it still stands.
All right. All those in favor, let me see your hand.
Did you get a second?
We, we.
First time, we're, there's actually a full motion on. Yeah.
Seek your post.
I'm still voting yes.
You're voting yes.
We have one, one of them.
And a extra one.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So we, yeah, yeah, six to one.
Put the pistol away now.
Thank you for your comments, it was a good conversation, I appreciate that.
And thank you, Maggie.
Her code is set up that it would be easy to add another kind of exception. Yeah, it would be super easy.
We'll get it there.
Thank you all, that was a really healthy dialogue.
Next, ordinance seventeen oh three, unit block subdivision, Maggie.
Thank you, um, I am bringing this. Uh, to after our hearing on November twelfth. Um, this will be, um. Request to accept the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the new unit block subdivision code, and this is L and C chapter seventeen seventeen. As a tool to be used in all zoning districts as an alternative to condominium ownership that was passed earlier this year. The Senate Bill fifty two fifty eight amended R C W to require all cities and towns to adopt procedures for unit lot subdivision. Which would allow division of a parent lot into separately owned unit blocks. And then in addition to the this state law requirement, um, that is required to be in effect by twenty twenty six, which I'm compliant update. This was on the twenty twenty four planning commission docket as a prioritized item with condominiums, which has already passed. And that was as a second item to address this year. Uh, we did have the hearing and, um, those that did speak were in favor of adopting this bill. Um, the ordinance is in your, um. Under tab fourteen, along with the proposals chapter.
This doesn't, this did eliminate that limitation to.
Oh, yeah, correct, sorry, I didn't, I didn't. Uh, at the hearing, I brought up the fact that the planning commission had requested removal of, um, section and it's shown redlined in your. Um, that letter A in seventeen seventeen. Was it oh four?
The restriction to one acre.
Yeah, the restriction, the one acre was removed. Just wanted to highlight that.
Didn't have it in front of me, but, um, yeah, they recommended removal that as it was just adding an unnecessary limitation on using this school. I am happy to answer any questions, I know this is. Too many times. Can be a little confusing.
The Lubbock City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen oh three, new lot subdivision.
Yeah, right, move by mine, seconded by Shane, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. And we'll go on to item fifteen, consultant's agreement, Andy, Parteet.
Yes, ma'am, um, this is for a consultant's agreement with Parteet for the Steel Drive Active Transportation Improvements Project Phase Two. Uh, this is the sidewalks on Steel that we talked about extending that corridor up that we, uh, built last year. From Evans where we left off, all the time street. This includes sidewalks on the west side and a bike lane. It also includes, like we did in the phase one project, replacing the water surfaces that are underneath that new sidewalk. Um, again, part of our integrated capital improvement program, trying to just proactively think of those things as we're putting infrastructure. Um, so this agreement is for all of the preliminary. Um, like the survey, geotech, the full design, and then also for the right way acquisition services. Uh, and services during bidding. Uh, we did receive a grant, uh, federal funds that are routed through the Fishland Dallas Transportation Council for this project. Um, the agreement with Parteet ended up being more expensive than the original grant funds, grant funds from C D T C. Uh, but working with the mayor, uh, I actually haven't updated on this yet, but we can go back to C D T C and request additional funds. For the increased cost in design, and then the remainder of this will be covered by our student's fund. We, we, uh. Uh, we published this, uh, her consultants in April of twenty twenty four. And we received, uh, two proposals and ultimately selected Parteet as the most qualified.
Questions?
Lubbock City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the consultant agreement with Parteet Incorporated for the Steel Drive Active Transportation Improvements. Phase two project with a not to exceed amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand ninety seven dollars pending approval from the Washington State. Department of Transportation Local Programs Office.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Dan, any other question?
Was this the one, it's now three hundred and fourteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay, that was the.
Yes, it looks.
Right, okay, that's all, it's the only question.
Yes. When you said most qualified? Does that mean they were the lowest bidder?
No, so we have to select the most qualified and we cannot ask for comps.
Appreciate them. All right, any other? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Also passes unanimously. On to action sixteen, Commercial Street Pedestrian Yard Rail Project, Andy.
Thank you, uh, so can you reconsider approving that, awarding the Commercial Street pedestrian guard rail project? This is, uh, on Commercial Street between third and eighth, that section you refer to as Fincham Hill. Um, and right now, there's a portion of that that doesn't have any protection for pedestrians or for. Uh, Parks Department that maintains our sidewalks through the winter. I think I've mentioned this before, but we've got a few near misses there, like the steep slope into the One H River. Uh, with our skid steer operators plowing the sidewalk, slowing off. Uh, down towards the river. Um, so staff brought this to our attention a few years ago and this project has been in the works for a while. But we were able to reroute T I B funds that were going to be used on Orchard Street to Central Street. And ultimately, we need to spend these funds by March twenty fifth of twenty twenty five, and we were not gonna be able to do that. On Central Street, just knowing that the Osborne has a future project, T I B did not want us to spend those funds in a location that they might need to be. The infrastructure need to be removed in the future, so we moved them down to this project. Um, and. I'm sorry. Had a bid opening last week. We had the bid opening last week, we received two bids and Coral Construction Company out of Los Angeles, Oregon was the lowest response bidder. Uh, we purposely set this project up just not, this is not a super traditional construction method that we're doing here for this. Uh, pedestrian guard rail because it's a steep slope and we wanted to have this in quickly in a cost effective manner. We're ultimately driving guard rail posts and then welding, uh, beams across it. Uh, so it's just a unique construction method. We didn't know what the cost was gonna be for this, so we ended up having a schedule A, which was the bare minimum that we needed. And schedule B, which was replacing the existing guard rail we have through a section of that. If we have really good prices, we are going to consider awarding for schedule B as well, replacing the guard rail. Uh, the way the pricing came in, uh, I mean, it was, it was quite on par with the engineer's estimate, but we just didn't feel like. It was worthwhile to do the schedule B where we already have existing protectors operators. So that's why this, uh, write-up details that, but we're ultimately recommending awarding to Coral Construction Company just for the schedule A work. Which is the location that has no existing guard rail or guardrail. I'm here for the other questions.
So the total cost is?
I'll just hand it back to Shannon.
Lubbock City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Coral Construction Company for the Commercial Street Pedestrian Guard Rail Project. In the amount of a hundred and thirty two thousand, one hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Second.
Move by Mike, seconded by, any other question? From the audience? All right, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Winachi Valley Animal Control Contract, Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Council, you're being asked to review and approve, uh, an animal control services agreement with Winachi Valley Animal Care Control. Um, the agreement is a three-year contract from twenty five through twenty seven. Uh, under this agreement, they provide essential animal control and shelter services for the city. They are the only game in town, I did meet with them. We have no other option unless we wanna create our own department, which would be far in excess of the twenty three thousand dollars. That this three-year contract will run us. Um, sorry, it's a per year, so this is a three-year contract with a not to exceed amount of sixty seven thousand dollars, six hundred, sixty seven thousand, six hundred and seventy five dollars. And it's just a three percent increase from the previous three-year agreement. Um, I recently, the mayor recently received a complaint from a resident. Um, about a dangerous dog in their neighborhood that was at large and has attacked. Has attacked their dog and and scared them. Uh, I forwarded the complaint to animal control, wait last night, I got a reply, um, today. Uh, so they, they are. Uh, they are working for our citizens when complaints are are received. But I was also, uh, informed that they do office hours, so they work nine to five. And if you call them after five, they're not gonna be responding, so if you have a dog at large or whatever, they can come, but during normal working hours. They don't work on an emergency basis.
The sheriff, will the sheriffs respond?
What's that?
Did, will the sheriffs respond?
They're not responsible for animal.
Say that one more time.
They're not responsible for animal control.
Um, a few years ago, we, um, made their contract a lot cheaper by not having them. Come up and, you know. They don't patrol, period, or?
They come, they, they don't come out and patrol, they come out when.
No, but I mean, if you had a contract that included that, then they would. No?
I'm not sure if they have the manpower to do that, given the fact that they take care of all Shalane County with the staff.
Okay, this bugs me that we have a code that. Um, you know, they're supposed to be on a leash, nobody pays any attention, their dogs all over the place, if not on leashes.
Yep.
And sometimes run up to you or to your dog, um, and that bothers me. And, um, I am guilty of this, not getting a dog license. And so, um. As soon as they leave one, it doesn't have wings on it. Big that my dog is like this. I mean, she's always on leash, but, um, if we could get, figure out how to, uh, make dog license, things you put on them. Some for little dogs with no points, but you do, and with no points on them, with sharp little points, oh, I'll have to come up and do that then. In twenty twenty five. Okay, I can deal with that, I just. I just would like to see that back the way it was. When people kept their dogs on leash and they weren't. You know, there's one guy, he has, he has three black dogs and for some reason they decided to start pooping my yard. And he came to pick it up. And you know, so they're picking it up and I told him, I said, it won't start World War Three. But, and I appreciate you picking it up, but my yard is not your dog's toilet. And so he goes in another direction now. I think they only have two, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, mom passed away, she had cancer. So they only have, they only have two black dogs, I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, he's. He's a nice guy, and we don't even know him, but they have his dog pooping my yard every day. It's a favorite spot.
Yeah, he, he definitely wants some.
Lubbock City Council moves.
To approve.
To approve and authorize the mayor to sign the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven animal control services agreement. With the three-year cost not to exceed sixty seven thousand, six hundred and seventy five dollars.
Figured out the quick return.
All those, oh, you had a comment? Anybody? Okay, it's unanimous again, eighteen, R H two engineering. On call utility engineering, and Andy.
Yeah, this is a task authorization with R H two, who's our on-call utility engineers, for them to, uh, design and prepare bid documents. Support during bidding and support during construction, our water system backup generator project. This is, uh, FEMA funded, that's routed through Shalane County. Um, and we received three hundred and six thousand dollars, uh, in grant funds and the remainder. And the remainder of this project, so the, the total cost is anticipated to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and six thousand dollars is grant funded, and forty-three thousand, seven fifty dollars is provided by the city's farm fund. This is ultimately to get backup generators at the three locations in our water system. Uh, that are necessary, so that's at our well site, our water treatment plant, and at our booster pump station. Patient where we have pumps in our system, um, and right now we don't. So this is just providing, uh, redundancy and creating a more reliable system for us. Uh, this portion with R H two again is just for the design, and so that's why that's not the whole account. So a hundred and ten thousand and forty, for seventy-four dollars. Um, once they're done, this is like a normal project, then we'll bid this. Uh, because there's electrical improvements that need to be made by a contractor, um, as part of this project as well. If you have any questions.
So Amy, this hundred and ten thousand. Is, um, is, that's not the generators, just the design and?
Yeah, it's the design of the electrical improvement, size of the generator, evaluating our system to determine what size generator we need at these locations.
But it's not the generators themselves, yeah.
Not the generators.
It's just elementary, okay.
Obviously, we don't know the size of the generators, it's hard to say, what do we anticipate the cost of the project in the end, do we have an idea?
Yeah, it was previously estimated to be this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but as part of our choose still, they'll give us a, a cost estimate for going without bidding, so we have a better idea. And then we still have the opportunity with the county to ask for increased grant funds. And we're working right now with them on the increase of timeline as well, so, um. Yeah, it, it sounds like it's something that has some flexibility there.
So is this hundred and ten thousand dollars built into the estimated cost of three hundred and fifty dollars, or does this bump the cost of the project up above that?
It's a good question, and I cannot find a detailed processment of where this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars originally came from. Uh, but again, that's why we've been coordinating with the county technology that we will most likely have an increase that we request for this project in grant funds.
From the budget perspective, Tom had given the two ninety in the grant revenue side. Cause there was some city match, so although it was above three, our actual keep is two ninety. Because they're keeping a certain portion of its managed regret.
That we're paying to the county.
The county, yeah.
I mean, you and I did, did into that together, it's my most recent compensation to become so.
With the extra one ten.
More than anything, we didn't have a very real cost estimate, and this is based off as far as I can tell.
So, where's the money coming from? Is this being, is this? Is this cost increase going to be paid back by the grant funds? Will it partially be paid by the water fund with that forty-three, seven fifty that's outlined here in the original cost estimate? Or is this a hundred and ten thousand dollars in addition to the forty-three thousand dollars?
Yeah, so right now, we're going to take this step by step, because this is the only cost that we have a true number for in this project, so this can all be funded by the grant fund. Again, like Chantel said, we have a match, and whatever this percentage equals out to be.
We have two ninety on the revenue side, and we have three fifty on the expense side, so you have a sixty K.
But I want to say it's like twelve and a half percent match, if I'm remembering correctly off the top of my head, that we'd have to spend on the grant, so. Uh, it'll be that percentage split out between the grant and the water fund for this a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Then when we go to bidding, and that contract comes back to you guys to award the actual construction contract, which includes providing the generators and the work to install them. At that point, then we'll have a better understanding of where that's coming from, and if that cost is over this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then that will come out of the water fund. If we can't get additional funds, uh, through FEMA, through the county. Right now, though, this dollar amount is coming out of that grant. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Level City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute. Task Authorization Number Five with R H two Engineering Incorporated for the Generator Procurement. And installment project with a not to exceed amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, and with one hundred and ten thousand seventy-four dollars.
Seconded by Sharon, no, no, Sharon. Yes, Ron.
Question for Amy. This is just for design?
Design, design bidding, bidding services and services during construction.
Is it normal to spend thirty to fifty percent for design, for service?
If normal, it's been about thirty percent. Uh, that is what's most typical, again, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with saying that the three hundred and fifty is our final total project.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, let me see your hand. And again, a passive unanimously. And then number nineteen, is the motion to approve or deny the petition to vacate thirteenth street right away, Maggie?
Yeah, this is a follow-up to our hearing that we had on November twelfth, um, in which the applicant was requesting to vacate the west thirty-five feet of thirteenth street. The basement to their property, uh, we heard from multiple residents that are not in favor of this. In addition, staff drafted a staff report, um, documenting non-compliance with the, uh, or not inconsistency with the compliance of the land. Um, at this time, I'm asking that the council, um, discuss this petition and provide direction. Um, if a, a motion to approve is made, um, staff will draft an ordinance for the next hearing. And if denied, the petition will not move forward.
What did you say at the very first? Were you in support of it?
This is not a staff decision.
I wanna, I wanna just say that I, I live less than three hundred feet away, we looked at a lot of ethics stuff recently at our retreat, and I think. A couple of them might apply to me, I've spoken with the applicants about the project. Nothing of substance that I'm going to represent here today, but for that reason, I'm going to abstain from discussion.
Recuse yourself, recuse.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Could you get off the dais, I'm serious.
Motion. I would entertain a motion.
Level City Council moves to deny the petition to vacate a portion of thirteenth street of budding property at. Uh, one, two, two, one Commercial Street and not proceed with an ordinance to vacate.
Second.
Read by Ann, seconded by Shane, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question, on, I think that, um, there's some legitimacy to the request, but. Looking at, so where I'm going with this is that, I think we need, as a city, to make, this thing's been sitting there for fifteen years, or better. And so I think as a city, we need to make a choice here, it's either we turn this into a gray space. Now just let it sit there for another fifty years, fifteen years, or we decide it is, it's five thou, almost five thousand square feet here. Maybe we make a, we make it as a, as a affordable. Dirt for affordable housing, one way or the other, but not just to leave it and hang it, so, um. I think that they brought up some points that nothing's been done with this, and we should do something with it, either one way or the other, and not just let it hang, so. Um, that's.
I didn't think the city could turn it into affordable housing.
Not currently.
But we could, we.
Well, you couldn't, but couldn't we, I mean, we could, uh, aren't we allowed to allocate to mend or something like that?
When we vacate.
Not on a vacation.
We had to offer it to the.
Oh, it's like a Jason thing.
Current, current law doesn't allow us to, we are, we are interested in changing that law.
Okay, okay, well, I guess my point is, we should do something with this, not just this flood.
Those trees are an issue with fire wise and all that, I'd like to see, take them down.
How about some cleaning up?
They're, well, I mean, they're a tall tree, they're like a hundred and fifty-year-old trees, and it's in a valley, I don't see how it can be developed or take those trees down. It's a beautiful, those trees are.
Well, they were complaining about the trees, also. And so, I just, I've, and I've been down there a couple times, Andrea and I went down one time, and I went down another time with my dog until I saw the bear, bear sign. And we left, um, but, um, scared it can't remember.
Yeah.
But I think if the trees are problem, that maybe the fire department come out and look at them or something.
They should, I live on that street, and I use that trail every single day, walking my dogs, and I. Love, like, one of, one of the community members had said, it's, it's the surrounding areas that the beauty of it, and the birds, and you're walking and your, if it's. Mowed down, it's like, you know, green space is gone, I think cleaning it up and the fire.
I just, I know, if it's a, a fire problem.
I don't understand, you say it's a fire problem, well, I'm not going to make a determination, but it's, it's standard trees, but I'm saying is, let's, like what people recommended. Who were suggested, turn it into a park apart, I mean, let's make something with it, not just let it sit there, so. Uh, that'd be my issue is, I think this has stirred something up, and I think we should carry forward with maybe developing it as a park apart. So. It could be worth, worth taking a look at, but.
All right, we ready to vote, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Okay, it passes six to zero with one abstention, one recused. Um, thank you all, and now council reports, Jerus.
My hands are work here. Okay, on the, um, eleventh, I attended the December newborn, and that would be probably Maggie talking about that. On fourteenth, the P R S A, which would probably be Shane or Travis. Um, on the nineteenth, there were over a hundred people that came to the free Thanksgiving dinner at the United Methodist Church. It was a blast, it was so much fun, there were so many people there, everybody kind of getting reacquainted, they hadn't seen each other in a while. Um, I also went to the, um, before the Thanksgiving dinner, mosquito board, and also the Shalane Davis Health District. And on the, let me see, what am I doing here, okay, on the twenty-third, the council retreat. On the twenty-sixth, today, the downtown steering committee, which is kind of Selby's thing. And on the, um, I wanted to let everybody know that on December seventeenth, at the United Methodist Church, the Lions Club is going to put on a meal.
January seventeen? What time?
Pardon me?
What time?
Five to seven.
Hey, go ahead.
You still did more than, nothing, nothing to offer.
Uh, we had a parking committee meeting, um, last week, and we discussed all sorts of great things. Um. Just freaked out. Um.
I can't find that.
Nope, I got it, I got it, I got it in my email, um. Uh, we continue to show a good upward trajectory with our parking revenue, um. Our ticketing revenue is slightly dropping, and I think that people are learning our system and, um. Our signage is becoming better, and so we're seeing a, a few, some fewer violations in, in certain places. Uh, we have successfully removed all of the parking meters downtown. It's really cleaned it up downtown, it looks really nice without meters anymore, um, yeah, Shannon and her crew just, um, just finished that up this week. And they also had a contractor install all the new parking lot signage, I don't know if you guys have seen it, but every parking lot has a different color, and it has its letter. Uh, on a sign, and it, it looks a whole lot more organized, and there's a lot of really great, um, signage that's been. That's been installed to provide information, is this a pay lot, is this a free lot, what are the hours, those sorts of things, there's even a signage here in the city lot, which is great. So, all of that new wayfinding information is up. Um, we're doing our expansion of clever city for the overhead sensors, the aerial sensors, um, and that's going to be. Um, that's going to be taking place in, in the future here, uh, we discussed, uh, parking garage next steps. Um, and in your, in our budget, you saw Selby was talking about how we've earmarked some money, um, for. Uh, early design of a parking garage, so those conversations are going to get started here in twenty-five.
Yay.
Yep. Um. We discussed the use of the enchantment parking lot for employee parking during Festival of Light weekends. Um, kind of as an additional help to, um, employees and businesses, uh, because parking is really, really challenging. Um, during our Festival of Lights with the increase of tourism. Uh, and then we also had a discussion about our glacier and our horseshoe lake paylots, um, only charging a dollar for the first hour because they're our most. Remote lots, we didn't land on anything, we had, um, discussion, pros and cons, that sort of thing. Um, but I know that that has also come up with us at the council this week in our email, um, specific to the glacier lot and. Uh, the fee that we're charging, uh, in that lot now that it's a pay lot, so, um, that's definitely, um. A discussion point for the council here in the near future.
Thanks, thanks for, for showing up on that end.
Yeah.
Makes a good point.
Uh, I had a Lake Transit Board meeting, um, but this, it was mostly about the Lake Transit budget, because there wasn't a lot of specifics to level one, so. It, it's budget, budget season.
How much money we got?
Okay, so on the sixteenth, I attended the Shalane County Planning Commission meeting about, uh. Variation in the S T R rules in the county, uh, there was a very good turnout, and I'd say about, I don't know. Eighty or seventy people, the majority were from Leavenworth, and, uh, yeah, so, um. I was there for that, spoke, um, on the twenty-first, uh, I attended the Housing Advisory Committee meeting and followed by a Finance Committee. Um, the Housing Committee, Housing Advisory Committee talked with, um, Jesse. Boyd and Rick Sellers, just about issues about. Other, uh, fun fundraisers, stream, stream things and techniques for, uh. Just kind of wide open discussion, uh, the mayor is there, so maybe Carl must have kind of filled that in. And finance, we just did a prioritization of what we've done all year, and then. We discussed the equipment replacement program, and then the priority of, of the budget and where its focus was, so pretty straightforward. Um, Shane is also there, um. Let's see, on the twenty-third. No, can't read my notes, so I'll just pass on what I did there. I did attend that, and on the twenty-third, also I attended the, um. Palestine in the Valley, which was an exceptional meeting out at, uh, Slit and Lady, um, really had just. A fun, joyful food and dancing, just leave it at that, it was great.
And song.
And what?
Music.
And music, so. Um, and then I attended the downtown steering committee meeting today where, uh, the Soma's team. Made presentations, and we had some really good dialogue, um, on what the issues were as far as starting up the whole process. So, that's my, end of my report.
He, he stole a lot of my report, but, uh, we had our last P R S A board meeting on November fourteenth, uh. Andy gave us a tour of, uh, the pool facility and all the failing components, uh, thanks, Andy, it was, it was good to see all the, you know. Firsthand, all the stuff that needs to be fixed at the pool, and, uh, yeah, I appreciated it. Um, we voted to raise the rate on swim team pool rental, is that right, Chantel?
Swim team prep.
Swim, swim team prep, from sixty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. Uh, all other rates are staying the same, but we did, uh, we are working on, or Chantel is working on. Uh, ten punch card rate thing for all pool services next year. Uh, we adopted the twenty twenty-five P R S A budget, and I signed the six-year M and O levy certification. Uh, I went to the Finance Committee meeting on November twenty-first, and he said, um. I really, uh, was impressed with the Equipment Replacement Program spreadsheet that Chantel had, that was really cool to see, and. Yeah, all the, uh, all the formulas and stuff. I kind of geeked out on itself, stuff like that, so it was cool. Uh, I went to the council retreat last Saturday also, um, learned a lot, it was really valuable, uh. Experience having Danielle, uh, marching. experience having Danielle, uh, Marchant come and talk to us about ethics and and Hannah Butler discussing, um, how to interpret ourselves and others. And I also went to the Felston in the Valley event, the Sleeping Lady that night. It was really cool. Um, like Zeke said, it was a, a great fundraiser for, um, a nonprofit organization uh, and aid relief for those suffering by the war in Palestine. And that's the end of my report.
Um, I've been traveling a little bit the past couple of weeks and I attended, well, I missed the retreat part of the PRSA meeting because I was remote and then everybody got back, got on, did roll call, realized I had a Teams call, work-related, tried to get off of that really quick. So I was only there for a brief amount of time. It sounded like there's really good stuff going on with the PRSA in the final meeting. Um, and then the Saturday's retreat was really great with the antics, um, refresh, um, and we went to that seminar early on when we were newly elected down in Manatchee and it was, it was a good time to get another refresher, um, from Danielle. Um, and then Hannah with the, um, personality stuff, and I really tried tonight, but I just couldn't help myself being a promoter. Sorry.
I tried. This is it. I'm done trying. I'm just gonna be me.
Really, um, so that's, uh, that's, that's, yeah.
I attended the grand opening of the Glacier lot. The work has gone really well there. I'm not feeling well. I tend to go to the Finance Committee meeting, but, uh, was able to make it, um, and I went to the retreat on Saturday, which was nice. I am intending to go to the, uh, Solid Waste Council meeting next week, so I'll represent city there.
Rob, that will love the fact that you're going.
Yes.
Oh, riveting.
That's actually really fun, fun meeting.
Everybody likes talking about.
It's, it's, it's good when that stuff, uh, is out of sight, out of mind. That means it's working properly, but once it's not working properly, then everybody notices.
Well, you're meeting with Kashmir and, you know, people, someone from their, those other communities too.
Yeah, great. Um, just real briefly, again, uh, Friday, I spent, you know, yeah, as part of Governor Elect Curtis' transition team and that was an amazing event with lots of good powerful people with all kinds of opinions. Um, but, um, we'll be following up if the housing portion, which is one of the main topics that they'll be addressing is, which I will be working on, uh, will be led by, um, Lieutenant Governor Danny Heck, so um, and we'll be moving when I've got lots of ideas, which they're, they're all, they're already prepped for me. Um, but, uh, and then our own housing committee, um, again, as Zeke said, we met with Jesse and trying to get at, um, you know, Jesse's past president of the chamber. He's actually going off their board, but, um, or taking a break as he says. But just trying to, to talk with him about what it might take to work with the chamber to try to get a funding stream and where they might be willing to go along that route and, um, yeah, so we began that dialogue, had some, some good give and take. They're very protective, like I said, of, uh, which I know, uh, their, uh, hotel motel tax not being used for anything like that, but, um, but then we approached, what about, um, just a per per, uh, night, per room fee independent of a percentage as another option that might get, and I know that that's what Airbnb and, uh, the RBO would have already indicated a willingness to look at. So if, if they all kind of could get on the same page, it could give, give some significant dollars. So we'll continue to explore that as well. And then we also added, again, um, as Zeke said, um, remind me of his name. Rick Sell, yes, okay. Who's done a lot of development and, and I mean, he, he would take us the opposite direction, uh, of what some of our, uh, critics have said. He thinks more density. He doesn't like cottages because it leaves too much open space. But, um, but, but he's got some great uh, unique ideas and great about how it's all in how, what you allow and how you present. He says, he, he gave illustrations of our own and said, the one that's gotten the most vilified is because it looks like four units. It gives four unit presentation. He says, you could get that same impact and he showed another one that has just as much, but they're stacked instead of giving you four, it gives you two in the front, but you still get four units out of it. But it gives a different feel to it, a different look and it fits into the neighborhood better. So it's about, he's all about fitting it into the neighborhood for that middle, missing middle, but he also thinks you can get more density and talked about, you know, reducing setbacks and things in order to do that. But anyway, it was very, um, he's done a lot of development in, on the west side and in Seattle and things, so he's very familiar with density. But, but it was a good, good perspective for the, the housing group to hear. Um, yeah, and then I too went to, uh, the, uh, Palestinian, yeah, um, uh, fundraiser for Gaza. Um, it was, it was, it was a great event, celebratory, but also, um, yeah, meaningful.
Yeah.
So, uh, and that's it. Yes, Selby?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're gonna wait for me to call you?
So as was indicated earlier, uh, SOMAS is the, uh, consulting firm that was selected to do the down, the downtown, um, redevelopment to pedestrian plaza or piazza as we kept on calling it today. Um, so we spent three hours with the team yesterday, um, and then they spent additional time with field staff out, um, trying to get a solid understanding of how the whole downtown functions from an operations standpoint. And then they met with the downtown steering committee for two hours this morning. So, uh, we're very, very excited about this project and you will be getting updates. Um, they anticipate having a ten percent design done in, within, uh, the year and they've got two council meetings um, on their, uh, timeline and Andrea has, has those prospective dates to put onto your twenty-five calendar. Um, thank you all for attending the retreat, taking your Saturday out of retreat. I'm happy to hear that you all thought it was worth your time, so. Thank you. Um, staff also attended a tabletop exercise with Shalane County Sheriff's, uh, Mercy Management Team. We did a, a mock, um, event downtown during a busy Christmas of light or Village of Lights Christmas Town Saturday. And we had city staff and the chamber here, um, and it was pretty eye-opening, um, as, as to everything that goes into um, responding to a crisis. Um, so that was very useful for us and I spoke to Jason Redfield and asked if we could do something similar for a wildfire situation, uh, with and involve the council as well, uh, in the spring. They thought that was a good idea. Uh, speaking of village lights, yeah, we've been spending a lot of time on, uh, dealing with the logistics around the city, the Village of Lights Christmas Town. And if anybody has complaints about the traffic control plan that's in place, you can take your anger out on Kelly O'Brien because we're implementing the plan that he has recommended. But just so you know, that was not city staff who recommended, right, banning left-hand turns onto the jump stick from. That was Chief O'Brien.
But it was in coordination with the DOT because the DOT is promoting that too.
Yeah, and, and, and Cascade Medical because they want an emergency. They want, they want North Road to function as an emergency vehicle route. And the way to do that is to keep tourists' traffic off.
We're thinking of this first weekend, like mine said, or the test.
Yeah, right, yeah. And I don't know if anybody follows the wash dot Instagram or Facebook. Um, I think Karen did send out the little, uh, cartoon that, that Laura Lobasak put together. It's, it's absolutely hilarious. So have a look at that. And that was sent out over their socials and and very well received. And hopefully people will will abide by the recommendations and not get eaten by the Yeti on North Road. Um, union negotiations, uh, continue. Our next session is on the fifth. I'm not certain we'll have a collective party agreement ready for you guys to approve on the tenth, uh, but we'll see. Uh, we are very, very close. We just want to make sure that what we propose to you for your approval is, uh, is within budget. And Sue and Shannon and I did an after action review with Farmers Market folks. This was their first year doing a Saturday in Lions Park and City Hall Parking Lot. So we had some good dialogue back and forth as to how to improve, um, those events. And so the one thing that I do want to discuss with you, because I promised I would, was Shannon and I did pitch to the Parking Advisor Committee and we discussed this during the Glacier ribbon cutting, uh, charging just a dollar an hour for those remote lots for the first hour, so that people who want to stop at the Bavarian Bakery and get a pastry or want to stop at Argonaut and it takes more than fifteen minutes to stand in line to get a copy of Argonaut, um, the direction from the pack was to gather more data. They wanted us to bring this back in March. Um, Mayor and I discussed this, this morning after that email came from the owner of, um, of Argonaut to all of you and Mayor reminded me, they're an advisory committee. We don't have to necessarily abide by what they, they say. So if the council feels that this is something that we should implement, then we will implement as quickly as possible. So I'm not asking you to take a vote, but I'm asking you to nod your head or raise your hand if you think it's a good idea to start charging one dollar for the first hour in those remote lots.
Yeah. And what, what time is that for mine to, yeah?
Whenever.
Where they're, it's, yeah, the lots are open from eight and seven till three, the lots are open. The idea of not charging until noon, which I, which I hear, um, is just gonna create camping.
Right.
If we aren't charging, it's gonna, people are just gonna start camping in the DOT lot again. And that's not what we want. We don't want people sleeping in their vehicles in that lot. We do not allow overnight parking in any of our lots with the exception of some spots down at Horseshoe Lake that Shannon has carved off to rent to people to keep their cars at overnight while they're staying in accommodations downtown because the accommodations don't have parking for them. So we don't want people sleeping in their vehicles. We don't want Glacier lot to become a park, a campground, a camping ground. Um, so we aren't going to not charge in the morning, but the dollar an hour would be a good nod, um, for those who like to, to to frequent that lot.
So while I, I know that the Parking Committee is an advisory committee and they're not decision makers, I will say that we did have some pretty good dialogue about this conversation in the Parking Committee. And the reason that the committee did not want to move forward with the dollar immediately was, yes, we want more information. But we also didn't want to make that decision and recommendation to the council coming in on a holiday where the parking lot will be full. And, and that's why there was the hesitation and the want for more information. One, it's just open. We don't know what the activity is. Two, there are several business owners on the Parking Committee that also expressed that, that while yet some, some businesses close to the Glacier parking lot and, and that, and the horseshoe parking lot would potentially benefit. The city's also not in the business to try and create parking lot benefits for specific businesses. Argonaut has their own parking on their lot. They really do. And
You do?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So what's the, are they asking for free parking?
Because they got used to having a free lot next to them. So I just want to make sure that the whole conversation is happening before all the head nodding happens, right?
Yeah, that's true. And I think those parking spots are super limited. I mean, I will tell you forty percent of the time when I parked at, uh, Argonaut to pick up my biscuits, I was not parking in that side parking lot. I was parking somewhere else because I was getting biscuits and I knew I'd be waiting forty minutes for it, but I couldn't park anywhere else. So I don't think that that parking lot is the answer. I also think those businesses that are part of the Parking Committee also benefit from having a bunch of businesses clustered together. I think that we also need to look at decisions in context and I don't, I don't think a dollar an hour is giving, playing favorites or giving any other businesses special consideration. I think it's taking into consideration the particular context that revolves around that lot. So I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah. And let me just say too, that, um, I mean, the dollar an hour, on my understanding was we were always gonna look at those because of their, it's, it's a distance thing. It's about how far you're, you gotta to move. And what you want to do, I think, and again, it's, it's trying to get the right people in the right spot, right? It's not just about the money. And by lowering it, you help spread out the parking into those lots versus, and, and I mean, there's, yeah, we're hitting the busy season and on the weekend, you'll feel those, but during the week, still not. I mean, an incentive is if it's cheaper in those lots.
I thought it was a dollar for the first hour.
Dollar for the first hour.
Dollar for the first hour.
That, that's what the recommendation was. It was a dollar for the first hour.
But it was also originally gonna just be a lower per hour.
And that's common. That's what happens.
And, and it is, it is lower now. It'll go even lower after, after, uh, January.
Right, after we're done with the lighting, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's already lower than our prime lots.
Yeah, it is.
By, by design.
And, and it's by design.
Yeah.
But based on the additional information from Councilmember Esper, are there still nods?
I want to rescind my nod.
You want to rescind? I'm still, I'm still nodding so far. Nodding, nodding, nodding.
Not the whole time.
How about you? Are you nodding? Or just nodding off?
I'm nodding off.
How many different things? What are you, they nodding for?
For, for going ahead and giving it an hour for.
A dollar for an hour.
For the first hour.
Argonaut was requesting, right?
Well, no, Argonaut's requesting us not charging until like two o'clock. But mind you, we spent five million dollars on this parking lot, right, for a hundred and two spaces.
Yeah, we can't make it a free lot.
So one dollar.
Thank you all for switching. I don't.
Okay. Chantel.
Whack-a-mole. I have no report.
Nice.
Um, we are in the final, we're finalizing a contract with BHC Consulting for, um, some updates in Compton. I'm super excited to have them onboard, uh, have a draft plan to UGA swap, but I'm excited to share with you guys next month. Um, I finally have a full team. I'll be quick. Um, I first just wanted to give a shout out to the other two directors. The three of us have had a lot going on. It's been very busy. Budget season, um, and Maggie has not had full staff. So the three of us have been putting in a lot of hours and are glad to have each other to work on that together, but really just wanted to acknowledge that it's been a lot. Um, I also wanted to give my kudos to our staff. Uh, the Hush Lines has been a pretty outrageous demand, especially this year with so many last minute changes uh, for three of our five divisions. And then Water and Waste Water also have big demands, uh, as always, just with tourism season. So to the entire Public Works Department, uh, thank you because they've been putting in a ton of hours.
Yeah, we thank them.
Um, unlike Maggie, I did not fully staff. Uh, we are, uh, still advertising for City Engineer, which I think Selby explained, but it's, uh, a change in title of my previous position. So we're still trying to hire for that. Um, I did mention earlier the Waste Water Chamber of Management Supervisor position is posted. And I'm sorry, I should clarify a little bit more. So we, uh, one of our operators left, uh, maybe two, two or three weeks ago, uh, he took a job at Manatchee's Waste Water. And in the process, our supervisor, uh, opted to step down. What was that? Tom worked it all along and then just moved there. So, so with him leaving and our, um, Waste Water Supervisor asked uh, to step down from the supervisor position. So I want to clarify, that's why we have two positions that are filled right now. So hiring for the supervisor. And then we also have a facility maintenance worker position, but Brian Vogel's retired at the end of October. Uh, and we received a ton of applicants for that. Uh, and we've received a ton of applicants for that position, so we're just working through that one right now. Um. I didn't want to let you know, uh. I, I know it was in Solby's last council update, but. The Blackbird Island pedestrian bridge is something you'll see at the next council meeting. Now, this probably hasn't been on your radar before, but it was identified that the uh. The, oh, not the island, we have. Uh, essentially the foundation of that bridge is quite scoured. Uh, so we are bringing on our Dura, who's our on-call transportation engineer. Uh, they also have. A structural team and a hydraulics team to take a look at that and make sure it's not something. That is A, like a failing limit of that bridge and B, give us some recommendations for what we can do to increase the scour on that bridge. So that we don't have a, a failure in the future. So you'll see that at the next council meeting, but just want to give you a heads up, like big picture, that's what's going on there and why. Um. And then last at your next council meeting, you'll see for your next council meeting, uh. The Shalane Douglas Transportation Council is getting rid of some of their old uh traffic counting. Uh. I'm sorry, my brain is how we're in. Some of their traffic counting instrumentation. And uh, they're giving it away for free, so we'll be bringing that, that with them so we can take that. We just have to pay for the data processing. Uh. But it's with Neo Vision frequently with it. It's pretty cool. It's like three D cameras and so we just upload camera data to them. So when we get things like our stop center plus. Uh, and speeding concerns, those types of things, we can set these cameras out there, gather data, uh, run it through this AI system and then ultimately have uh. Take happier data.
It's free.
It's free. They're getting rid of it.
Wow.
This is something that sits on the ground?
It's full.
It's what?
Full mounted.
Full mounted, oh, good. Because when we set that thing on the ground, it's a speed limit.
Can you give us a push?
All right.
I'm going to adjourn.
Oh, it's a river.
Ask, how about that?
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving.
No construction on Thanksgiving morning.
I'm gonna be looking on my chart.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out how to get around the chair.